I hereby call doors the Jefferson County Regional Planning Commission to have a reform. I think we've got all of our members here present tonight. I would ask the members that have had an opportunity to review the minutes from the past meeting, if there's any corrections to be made, please note, otherwise I'm looking for approval. So, we have a motion. And a second, any other discussion? All of us favor aye, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. At this time, do we have, I'll give you the opportunity, if you have anything that you would want to present from the citizens to the planning commission.
What about those minutes on the document?
Well, I don't know if we need to take them up now, or is it other business?
Or is that other business, don't it? There's another business.
I thought it would be no business, but we don't have it on there.
No, other business, yeah. Be another business.
Okay.
They're not in this one, are they?
No, it's just the minutes that we need to, I guess, run over. So, at this time, if you have anything that you'd like to present to the planning commission as far as that goes, here's your time, have time to speak, if you hold your comments to three minutes. Being done, we shall proceed to new business. The first, the first item is a revised site plan for review of Douglas Lake Glamping at 1558 Ponderosa Drive, Danry, Michael Grasso, and Nisla Moncés.
Should have the site made in fact.
I have three of each here for the general. And one on top has been expanded, parking lot, and then the other three are the total area of the site.
And I know there were some things that we addressed when we presented this before. Looking at this revised plan, have all those, you think, been our concerns?
Yeah, when it gets time to address the parking near the entrance and exit, I just have a couple of things, I want to make sure a couple of parameters are met.
Okay.
You can go ahead and explain this, if you would, and what changes you made.
Okay, as you asked, I expanded that to a single page, so that will be a little bit more detailed. We did make some changes in the original plan, you may have seen that we were shooting for 13 parking spots, topside. We did reduce that to 11, because we do have four already on the paved circle that are in place as we speak right now. So, two of those will go to site one and site two. They'll actually be designated parking spots for those clients to pull in and park right at their sites. And then we have gravelled areas, which will be additional pull-off from the circle, which again is a one-way traffic, in and out. There'll be two more cars there, giving us four on the circle, and 11 in the current proposed parking, which would give us that total that we're looking for, which would be the 12 units and three staff members. Currently, right now, we'll be a family-owned operation for the first year or two. We probably won't be bringing in any outside help right out of the hole, so we won't have parking, but it doesn't mean that we won't be ready for it when we do. The wellhouse that you may see there was the family's previous or very first wellhouse, that wellhouse will be removed from the parking. We did want to give you an accurate picture.
That's the parking by the road.
That's topside, yes, sir. That wellhouse will come out of there, we'll have it tested to see if it's still got water. If it does, we will try and divert that wellhouse and keep it topside, but out of the parking area. So, that won't be there once we step into construction. That will be gone from the equation altogether. I will be working with Appalachian Electric to discuss where the poles currently are, and what we'll be able to do with them, if anything, in reference to relocating, once we grade it down and level, they will come out and let us know if that can be moved further back to the corner, and take that out of the parking as well, or if it'll have to stay where it is, and we'll have to do a fenced perimeter as it's proposed, currently in that drafting. That's all of our changes at this point. We did do a 24-foot entry, that'll be a double gate on the entry, and an 18-foot on the exit. It'll be a single slide-back on that exit. There will be fencing there that divides Ponderosa from the actual parking, so that no one is merging out onto the thoroughfare traffic without looking both ways, obviously. The cars will be parked, and everything is designed to go in forward and back into the parking spots, as you see. Remember too, full-service mentality is our goal, so we will have those people coming up in parking, we'll know they're coming. They'll be booked online, they'll have a check-in, checkout window, and we will be doing a UTV meeting at the top, where we bring them down to the property, to their sites, and put them into their uridor tent, and then at the end during checkout, we'll give them that complimentary out-service back up to the parking lot.
One question, Mr. Grasso. The thing is, is that you've got some of these in here, it's only nine and a half foot wide, and which basically, for us, for a lane of pavement typically, we're in somewhere between 10 and 11 feet, and that's just so that basically for our emergency vehicles. So, to me, you've got 11 feet on the one street, or loop right there, but it comes to nine and a half. I like to see that widened, just because I know how hard it is to get ambulances and fire trucks into this area. And the other thing is, I was under the impression, we spoke last time, that this other trail right here, I thought you were going to loop that around and come back into Ponderosa Drive. I thought there was going to be two means, two ways in and two ways out. And I guess the reason I say that is, is that, and I know there's probably not a tremendous amount of traffic coming in, but that is still just 11 feet wide there from the parking, so you've only got, the lane's only wide enough for one vehicle, so if you've got one vehicle coming in and one going out, somebody's got to back up.
There won't be any, it'll be a one-way loop, sir. Everything is one way in and one way out. There'll be no cross-traffic. There's already gates in place up at the topside there, you may see coming in onto the loop, that there's already a set of columns there with a gate. There'll be an entry there that allows people to come in at their booking windows, so there'll be no cross-traffic there. If you're referring to the unimproved trail, that was never intended to be a road to begin with. It was going to be a gravelled trail that allowed people to walk through nature. Again, remember, we're an ecotouristic project, we're looking to avoid concrete asphalt at all costs. So, that particular trail, we did put there in the notations that we could develop a sidewalk, and if you notice on the loop on the entry, as you come in close to T7, just below it where you see the Y, that entry actually would be a point where the ambulance or fire truck could stop. There'd be a full sidewalk system that would allow for gurneys and any other emergency equipment to be wheeled down and out to the urids. T3 through T10 would all be accessible through that walkway. We're not talking...
No, you've got to have a way in to that ambulance to get to that side.
Okay.
That side has got, it's got to be wide enough, the angles has got to be, and those angles down there at that Y, with a nine-foot road and a nine-foot trail, they can't swing a fire truck off there. And you've got to have, you've got to be able to get those emergency vehicles to the side. They're not carrying a bucket of water down there. They're not wheeling the gurney down the sidewalk. That's not the way we've got our stuff. That's got, the emergency stuff has to be where they can get to the side, not, and I don't know how far it is between the urids, but you can't have them going 500 or 1,000 feet with a gurney on sidewalk.
It's not anywhere close to that distance, but that's okay, I understand your point. It's, they're very close together, they're probably about 60 to 70 feet apart. Remember, while we're working with a five-acre track here, so. And sir, to answer your earlier question about the road does, the unimproved road that you see there, as it's posted, it does go up right there where you see it in, close to the adjacent lot property line. I have a full access to go out and onto the upper parking and out through Ponderosa. We didn't put it there because the grade is quite steep, and in reference to your emergency vehicles, until we get in there and grade that down, it's probably not going to meet an entry-exit point, just because of the grade.
Okay, I'm still missing something. Because as I look at this plan, and I see that basically, here when we come down the drive, and basically it's 11 feet in width, okay, and it comes right by the parking area. So, when someone pulls into their parking, and they park their car there, and then you're going to pick them up and take them, I understand that. But from that spot back to the street, what, two cars can't, they can't...
Okay, well, they're not coming down that circle, sir. They're actually going to enter the topside, this is a, you're going downhill there at the grade, you can see where the entry to the upper parking is it proposed to be, that's pre-the entry gate into the circle.
That's the way it's got to flow.
Yeah.
Never mind, I missed it. You got it, right there.
They won't be coming down that road.
I see, I figured it out now.
It'll be marked accordingly.
Yes, sir, the gates are in place, there'll be signage accordingly, and again, it's a family-owned operation, our goal is to be right there to greet them, and be there the whole step, in and out. So, the parking lot is truly separate from the actual circle.
Yeah, I see that now, okay, I'm sorry.
How many parking places you have down the circle?
Four, sir.
Okay.
And 11 topside is what's proposed. Once we move that wellhouse later down the road, if we decide that we need to expand, that's going to open up quite a bit of room, and depending on how Appalachian views the move on the electrical pole, it may very well open up space there as well.
Okay, and that circle going down to where the tents are, that's 11 feet throughout?
Throughout the entirety, sir. Actually, some spaces, it's wider.
And I guess if somebody comes in or somebody leaves, you'll have control over that?
I'll be there to let them in and see them out, yes.
Because I mean, we understand that that will mostly be used by your onsite vehicles to take people.
Employees and the UTVs, yes, sir.
Yeah, my, Chairman, Mr. Grasso and I talked earlier today, we talked about the need to have at least 18 feet, and preferably 20 feet of backup space for the parking places up through the road.
Up here.
Yes, and there's a couple of things there, we mentioned that that wellhouse was going to be changed or relocated, did I understand that correctly?
Yes, sir, and if you see in the lot, actually, they came out and they plotted it, there's 18 feet as it is right now. So, you have, if they were to back out, again, the goal will be to have it posted so that people pull in, and if you notice the flow arrows, come in through the entry gate, 25-foot entrance, flow to the left of the wellhouse or fenced area, and then pull forward like they're going out the exit, which is more than 20 feet there, and back into their parking spots. Parking spots will be labeled according to what uridor tent that they're staying in, so they'll park accordingly.
And then, one other thing, there's a power pole with a fence around it.
There will be, that's the concept. The concept is to get away from the cars, we're going to have the courtesy to bring them in and bring them out. Now, if I have somebody that's handicapped, or I have somebody that we know is maybe not capable of making the trek, that's what we're there for, the simple communication to the office, the UTV will be there to move them around accordingly, so.
Mr. Grasso, tell me what you said about the power pole earlier, that span stand, you were going to have that moved, is that correct?
Well, that's if Appalachian Electric deems that it can be moved. Remember that based on guide wires and how they stretch those lines, once we go start to grade that lot back, I'm hoping where you see the 4.2, 49.2, I'm hoping that on that spot, we'll be able to have Appalachian Electric move that to that exact corner, which would be the edge of the parking lot, and that would take that completely out of the main entry-exit area as we see it right now.
As a stance now, that would, in my opinion, be necessary in order to have the backup space for two or three of those parking places.
I see that to the right, yes, sir, you're right on that one. We've only got about 12 and a half to 13 feet right in those spots right now. That's if we were to fence it, and they were to go with high-line guide wires to hold the poles, which is what they've discussed with me. So, those will be clear and out of the way, but the pole may not be able to be moved. It's really going to have to get to the stage where we have it graded, and they're going to have to come out and line it up and see if it works.
Can you, can you go further away from the road with your grading?
Yes, most definitely.
Okay. Because it really wouldn't need to be 18 feet, because you have to back out a certain distance in order to make your turn.
Yeah, we definitely got room to expand towards the lake, which would expand away from the current pole.
To me, that's a major parameter that would need to be met.
Yes, no doubt.
In order for safety and...
And it's a concern of mine already, in the window, we definitely want something done with it, so.
That was my biggest concerns, Chairman, was to make sure the parking was designed...
I see that, I understand the move of the pole, and I understand now how it's going to flow through there, and I see the other access area here for the parking, so that worked, in and out, you're not meeting traffic at all. It still comes down to, really, for us, one thing is that if we can get emergency vehicles in here, then I think we're good. If we can't get emergency vehicles down through there, then I would feel, I don't feel comfortable.
I pull a 24-foot trailer around that circle behind a 3500 Dooley Dodge Ram, and if I can pull that through there, I'm pretty sure just about any emergency vehicle, and any ambulance or fire truck should be able to do the same.
You're talking about the gravelled drive?
Yes, no, the actual paved area, the circle. Yeah, all that's paved, all that's asphalt from Ponderosa all the way in. I pull a flatbed 22-footer behind a 3500 turbo Cummings Diesel, big Dooley, down through that circle, sir. So, it's tight, but it's wide in the places that it needs to be wide in.
No, it's not, it's not, it didn't design for that.
Are you going to get that in, sir?
I don't know.
As we spoke on that one, I can work on that, sir. That's an unimproved, these meetings with you are going to give me the parameters, I've got enough room that I can widen.
You've got to make that up, or they can make that turn.
No, no, and I understand that, if you...
Even if it, even if it just went something...
We can change up the route for an emergency vehicle, if we know one's coming, if you notice where the office, if you notice where the office is...
That's wide enough there to go to here and come here. But if you even had something, still have this one up here.
If you notice where the office is...
Go that way.
Exactly, you can come in behind it directly, that road is paved all the way down to where you see T3 or Y3, and that road is your connector right there, that could put you in front of everything along that strip.
I felt that was what we talked about before.
Okay. Here's the thing. These were proposed, and if we have to come back from this site plan with those, then we may make this a stipulation right here.
Those are three years out, gentlemen.
Okay, I'm just looking here. Any questions? No? Okay. A little confusing, but... Hopefully. Would you... If we put a little stipulation in on this, that if I had my fire chief to come out and look, and he says, "No, Terry, we can make that, no problem," as one of the stipulations, that's where it goes, and if I had our EMS people come out here and take a look, and if they said, "No problem, we can bank it," if we were to put that as a stipulation in there, and took some sort of action on this tonight, would you feel comfortable with that? In other words, if they said, yes...
I'd actually prefer it, sir, you know, for me, safety is going to be foremost, so I have no problem with that.
And then, it would help, I think, if we had something like this, where they could pull in here, and that would cover that.
If they could pull in and they could either go that way or that way.
They could.
And then they could come, they could turn around and come back out that way.
See, they can make that turn there.
Make that.
Yeah.
But they cannot make that right there on nine foot, the way you swing it. Whether, if you've got, that fire truck's going to be a, it's going to be 178 to 12 wheelbase. You can't make a nine-foot turn and go back and get that around that way. You've got to have some way to get up there.
But all we need here is...
Or you've got to have another road like that.
We just need something like that, and this could be gravel, that's gravel, just to get to there, and...
They've got to be able to get within...
Well, I know, they're probably, from here, they're probably 15 to 20 feet from here, and they're probably about 40, 50, 50 there.
That particular...
And you can go and drive away a house and...
That particular segment, just to remind all of you, is what we call Stage Two. That's that, that's going to be Y3 through Y10, that's three years out, and that segment gives us plenty of time to develop it to fit safety requirements.
Okay, so, for today, then, what units are you looking for approval for?
I'm looking for T2, T1 through T6, but we can start out with, that still puts us on the same trail.
So, you're...
T1 and T2, T3, I'm sorry, Y3, Y4, Y5, and T6 were part of the initial first startup.
Okay, you're getting...
Yeah, we're back into that area, and I see that.
Okay.
But we can work with that. If you want us to put stipulation there to bring in the fire department and your EMTs, I'm happy to walk them around the property and let them give me their 10 cents on what works and what doesn't.
In here, okay. I'm just asking, you know, I don't know what, you know, I'm just looking at, I feel comfortable with that stipulation, if you, for that, and I know this is a preliminary, and you'd be coming back for a final, and then basically, I know you're looking for some direction, and so my thing is, if they come back and tell me everything's fine, then I'm going to be fine.
Okay.
I just know, I just know I get complaints, especially from the fire department, because they don't, they just, you know, they said, "Have you ever had to go to places that we've had to go and do the thing where we have to go and do our..."
I think once they see it, you're, it's confusing looking on a site map than actually being on the physical piece of property. Everything is pretty much line of sight and very, very close together, so access is not going to be difficult, and I've got enough room down there that if we do have to expand it, it's there to be done.
Okay. The other thing, last time that we talked about was part of, is the stipulation was, is that, we talked about basically how you were going to handle your septic sewage, and you told me that basically you were hoping to do the incinerator-type things, and that basically you were looking from the state to get approval, and if not, then you were basically going to have to go back with a field, a septic tank with leach lines, and in which case then you would have a soils map. Can you give us an update on where you stand on that?
Well, I mean, that was with, I believe it was Tim, was that Tom, I'm sorry, and Tom has not got back to me. He was the one that I gave all the information to, he was going to bring it in front of the state, if state was to say anything about it, give him their feedback. As far as I'm concerned, each year it is self-contained, and all of the bathroom facilities there outside of gray water were the only ones that were not going to be going through a composted toilet system, so whether we went with incinerators, or we went with barrel rolls that turned back into the environment, once it was completed compost, those will be the two directions on black water and so forth.
But you're not, you don't know which stretch as of now, you don't know?
I haven't, I have not had a conversation with him since the last meeting, so I'm waiting on the answer to come from him.
Okay. I feel comfortable that you've got enough room there to do it, if we have to go back to our regular conventional top system.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I was just curious as to where you worry at in the process.
It's in his hands, sir, just, the only answer that I need from him is that the state doesn't have a problem with it, and accepts the new concepts of the new equipment that's out there and available, and in the gray water system, he's going to be working on us with how that will work if the state decides that it's not suitable, or some path that they're willing to go down.
Okay.
But definitely, I'm capable of taking care of either of the work. My goal will be to go as green as possible.
Okay. All right. Any other, anybody else have any questions? Does everybody understand what our...
Yeah. Okay.
All right. Did you say there would be some pull over parking?
Definitely, there's four spaces right now, and one that we'll be actually building here within the next couple of days that'll seat another four cars. Is, they're not really necessarily designed for that mentality, they're just additional leveled space that'll be gravelled in for uses of storage and so on, but if need be, they could be used for cars, and of course, they're all adjacent to the circle, so they're easy pull-in, easy pull-out.
Chairman, I would add with the stipulations you mentioned, the ones that we talked about earlier about the backup spaces being 18 feet for the parking up there Ponderosa Drive, it doesn't really matter to me which way they go, move a power pole or expand it forward towards the main part of the development, but that needs to be no less than 18, and 20 or even a couple more feet is preferred.
Okay.
I think their ingress egresses will work, especially since...
Now, I see what he's got there, that makes perfect sense, I just missed that early on, so. All right, so basically, right now, we're looking at, that we need 18 feet for backup for the parking.
Minimum, yes.
Minimum, and then...
And that applies to 1, 2, 3 parking spots, 4, so if we look at, we look at where the current wellhouse is, we have 18 feet, probably a little bit more there already with the wellhouse.
Okay.
Once the wellhouse is gone, we'll have probably 30-plus feet there, 28 actually I can see. So, the one directly to the front of the power pole, you can see 1, 2, 3, and then hard right, where you see number 19 listed there, 19-foot, those would be the ones that would be in question for the 18-foot.
Right, and you could also angle some of these perhaps, to have the backup space so people can maneuver. It doesn't necessarily have to...
Yeah, next week, I'll have the gentleman out, engineer from Appalachian, and I'll have a little bit more light on what he can or can't do with the pole. At that time, we can make the decision as to whether it can be moved, or then I can expand further to accommodate the need for the extra space. All that fencing that you see there too, is to direct as you're coming in through the entry. That'll all be gone as well. Once the wellhouse is out, that was there to protect the wellhouse. Once the wellhouse is gone, there will be a need for any fencing inside the parking area. Yes, sir.
Okay.
Very well signed in Mar-a. All controlled entry and exits.
I still want to see that trail come up there before he can come back up the parking lot.
Well, I can make that happen, sir. Not a problem. It'll take a little bit more work, but if it's going to happen, would you make it do?
Either, either come to here.
Come up out of the road or come up back up the parking lot to get where they can.
It's already, it's already there. I just need to grade it to, I guess when your firemen and your EMTs come out. They can give you an idea as to what kind of pitch grade needs to be there that they can deal with.
Okay.
So.
All right. That, that's the main, it, it, like I say, i- if they're good with this, then I, then I'm, I'm going to be good with it.
Okay. That's correct.
So.
I'm only looking for a good safe program.
All right.
It works.
Okay. So that would be subject to also looking at extending the trail to the parking lot.
And that's if EMT and fire deems it necessary. Okay. And just to throw it on the plate, with all respect to everyone on board, I've been out to Gatlinburg three times in the last month. As I run Great Smoky Mountain Eco Tours, so I'm out working in those type of campgrounds. And there's multiple campgrounds, huge ones, that have urits and tents that are not accessible by the road for any EMT or fire truck to get to, and they would gurney to get to anyone that's in it. Seventy-five to a hundred yards from the road, easy, minimal. So mine is a lot less than that. And there's several campgrounds in the Sevierville area and Pigeon Forge that are nonetheless the same. So that doesn't mean that I'm looking for that, but it is out there, so. All right.
I understand that, Mr. Michael, but I.
No, no, and I'm ready to go the distance, whatever it is.
We're not Sevier County.
No, sir, I understand.
All right, do you feel comfortable with the, the conditions that we've got here, that maybe to put on, to put on this? And that way we'll get that done, give him direction, then he'll come back with his final. And if the final, we'll have, we'll have our feedback then from those two departments. And if they're comfortable with it at that point in time for the final, then he'll get his final, okay?
I'm fine with that. Will I get some kind of a, a notice of when these people are going to come out?
Uh, yeah, I'll try to get in contact with them. I'll make myself a note, uh, to, for them to schedule times to go out there and take a look at the property.
Perfect.
And like I say, if they, if they're comfortable with it, and they may say, oh, no, that's a piece of cake or whatever, then that's fine. I, I, I just, uh, but uh. I, I'm just getting feedback from the fire department because they're getting, they're getting in some.
That's what it's all about.
They don't like getting any predicaments.
I understand that. I want it to be a safe place and meet whatever codes required.
Okay. All right. Then I'll entertain motion. Approved based on.
Stipulation.
Based on the eighteen foot for parking, uh, backup, uh, and then subject to approval for the ingress and egress by the fire department then, and EMS. And then, uh, extension of the, the trail to the parking lot if deemed necessary by EMS and, and the fire department with, based upon their conditions for design. Does that sound about right?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so I got a proper motion.
Second.
And I got a second. Any other discussion? All right, I'll also play right. Uh, any opposed? Okay, sir. I'll, I'll get with them and see if we can expedite that.
Thank you, guys. Good luck.
Are you ready for seating next item? Next item is preliminary plat review for the bungalows at Danries, twenty-eight lots off CM Road, Danries, by Mr. Michael Parks. Chairman, Mr. Parks.
Go ahead and explain this if you'd like.
Taylor Forester, eleven eleven, North North Shore Drive, Knoxville, Tennessee, three seven nine one nine, here on behalf of the applicant, Mr. Michael Parks. Uh, I have proposed subdivision, larger tracts, um, around an acre, acre plus. Got, since it's taken about thirty-six plus acres. It's creating, I guess, a subdivision of twenty-seven lots, and then there's remaining five acre parcel that would be carved off. And not connected with the, uh, the subdivision or the, or the drive aisle of the subdivision. We've got a cul-de-sac ending turnaround, I believe, should comply with, uh, EMS, fire, fire requirements for terminally goods there. Incorporated the detention stormwater maintenance area on the, should be southeast portion of the development. The lot averages should comply with the requirements of the ag zone. Which being average anywhere between the, um, minimum thirty thousand up to, I believe, seventy-four, seventy-eight thousand.
Seventy.
Seventy-eight.
Yeah, that's the maximum.
Maximum, and I think we've got to hit, um, average of forty if I'm, if I recall correctly, I think.
I believe, yeah, that's right.
And so I've, I've re-done the calculations, confirmed that the averages are there. I think we're right at uh, forty-seven thousand five hundred, uh, lot average. And that's, that is not calculating that five acre track because that would in fact exceed that seventy-eight thousand square foot lot, uh, maximum.
Good, you have one that's, um, close to that, lot number fifteen.
It is, it was close, yeah, it's a seventy-seven something, yeah. But, uh, good development, larger tracts, um. Obviously this is just preliminary plat approval, but, but do feel a fundamental view of those subdivision requirement regulations.
The proposed road is not where the driveway is now. Tim and I were out there today.
Correct.
So if somebody was out there to look at it, that's not where the proposed road is going to be. It's going to be a little bit to the, um, to the east. Right, east, okay, but anyway.
Got our engineer here operating those questions.
Um, and the drainage. The drainage, it looks like most of it's going off to the southeast corner of the, the, um, development.
Towards lot fourteen.
We've got a pond down there in lot fourteen.
Detention pond.
We couldn't see that from the, where we were, from the road, of course.
Okay.
Is that an existing pond or proposed or both or?
Proposed.
Okay, okay. And the slope of the road hits right at twelve percent.
That's right.
The maximum slope, so.
Okay. So are these going to be, I'm looking here, are they served by utility water there or will they, these lots be served by, you mean, real estate?
Utility water, Mr. Parks.
It's utility water. We're going to extend it from Pine Cemetery. I've already talked to Mike.
Okay.
Should be that last sheet shows that.
Okay, I should get to it.
That's why I need.
There's an existing four X line on Steel Road that we just didn't think that it was digging up the, you know, started installing fire hydrants, you just don't have enough pressure.
Have you, uh, as far as flow testing and everything, you think you got, you're going to have enough flow and pressure there for fire hydrants, you think?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, Mike felt like it'd be, it'd be in good shape.
Okay.
So we will do the engineering calculations to verify.
Okay. I would think that when I, just from looking at it, you would probably prefer if we could have two fire hydrants. If we'd like to have one at, at the entrance and then if we have one back to cover somewhere midway between, but uh. Hey, so that's just the way they like to, to operate, like when they come in, they just drop their hose and hook up and go, so.
Right, and.
I'll see where you go. I, I think that, I think that would probably work.
All the properties need to be within five hundred feet of a.
Right, right, yes.
That's true, okay.
And you didn't count this five acre tract, did I hear correctly, as far as going against the.
As far as lot averages, yeah, I've got my, my calculations.
I started to add them up and I saw where you did the calculations.
Correct.
But I did check to see if they were all within the, the range.
Uh, yes, I, I did, I did it today.
So we know we're good on road slope.
Mm-hmm.
And we know we're good on water and fire hydrants. Uh, we know we're good on drainage with detention pond. Correct?
Yes.
Uh, we know that we're good on the lot sizes. Correct?
Mm-hmm, and the lot widths.
Okay.
There's a couple of ninety-foot ones, there's a ninety-foot one up there, lot number one, but it actually has.
Fronts on the other end, yeah.
Plus on the other road.
So it's got plenty of.
Everything else looks to be a hundred feet.
Okay.
As required.
So based on what you see, what's your recommendation?
I'll recommend for final approval and of course with the fire hydrants being.
Preliminary, yeah.
I'm, I'm preliminary, I'm sorry, with the fire hydrants of course being, um, situated, so all properties are within five hundred feet.
Okay. Questions? Am I getting questions?
Oh, one other thing, um, the, the, um, this is. It just hit me a few minutes ago, I didn't think you were going to review it earlier, but the cul-de-sac is a little longer than what we allow, but we could, we should. I think it's necessary, given the nature of this piece of property. And, um, a thousand feet and it looks like it's a little over a thousand.
Okay.
So anyway, that's not a deal breaker in my opinion, but, um, I would just recommend that we do address it.
Okay.
And we don't have to have a border zoning appeals, it's not a zoning issue, it would be various.
The subdivision.
In the subdivision regulations, it can be made as part of a motion if the planning commission agrees. That I would like to approve this plat, a preliminary plat.
All right. Any questions, David? Anything else? All right, I'll, I'll entertain a motion.
Make the motion, you said.
Yeah, a proper motion.
Right.
And a second. Proper motion and a second. Uh, and, uh, is that with the variance to, uh, extend straight?
Yes.
Okay. All right, so, uh, being open for discussion, all those players say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. All right. Any questions?
Yes.
Uh, the next item is discussion regarding crypto mining guidelines related to zoning. And, uh, I'm going to ask Commissioner Scarlett, he is the one that has started the research into this. And, uh, I'm going to let him tell, tell you what his fact finding has found so far.
Several surrounding counties have been either approached about this or have them put in. Uh, Clever County has one of our put in, I don't think they're very happy with. Uh, there is one going in in Marstown, pretty for sure for that, or, or Hamlin County, not in Marstown. But, uh, I asked Mr. Greg down at the electric co-op, uh, Mr. Greg Williams, and as you know, he's helped us on before, quite willingly and and helped us do some things on the solar farm, stuff like that, and so he kind of typed up some bullet points there. And some of the things we need to think about, and I think he's got, got some very good points in this. Uh, and as we talked about on the solar farms, about them having a bond to clean these things up. These typically are going to be container, if you think about those rail container, the.
Multimodal things?
The intermodal type container. Uh, ship cargo container, these, that, that's what these things are going to look like. And there's going to be several of them stacked together. Uh, one of the biggest issues is a, is just a huge demand for electricity, so they're, they have, they're going to have to be located next to a substation. Or in close, close proximity to a substation or a source of power. And they also, uh, they have a significant, uh, noise issue because of the cooling fans that are in these things. So when we do with them, uh, you know, they're going to be probably eighty-five plus decibels standing close to them. So we're talking about a jet being what, ninety? So you're, you're talking about significant things. So when we talk about these, I think we, those are some of the things that we need to do. And, and even if these are in industrial size, we need to consider noise barriers and stuff like this. And I, the reason I asked Mr. Terry to put this on there is that as long as we're discussing it. They, we can't, they can't put one in without us having the regulations once we get it on. If we did not have the regulations, then they'd be able to come forth and, and present it to us. But I, I want us to start at least talking about this because they've, uh, it could be something that they have. Uh, Mr. Greg said that they have, at this point in time, they have, uh, I think White Pine or up in there is, is the area that they, that's the only area they have excess enough power to do. At this point in time, but, you know, it could be an issue in other parts of the county. But they do have some limitations about because they are huge consumption of power, according to what he told me.
And they do what?
They're, what basically trigger they are, it's going to be a container or a series of containers that have a computers that, they're going to be stacked full of computers. And these things solve problems. And they get a coin or a crypto or a blockchain for solving the problem. And that's where it creates a value. If you, if you've heard on TV about Bitcoin and stuff like that. For every problem they solve on these things, they get a percentage or a blockchain or a coin or a token for every one, and that's what, that's how they're making their money on these things. So it's, it's basically a computer server farm. And there's, there's tons of warehouses that were scattered around the country that have computer servers in them. But these things are, they're taking these and putting them in those cargo containers like you see on ships. And they're stacking them and then they're bringing in six and eight, ten of them and dropping them off and putting them in a location on gravel or concrete or whatever, and they're stacking those things up. So, you know, as far as, I don't know what the formula is for the making the money or how much they're going to make, but apparently these things are, are becoming prevalent. And a lot of the things they're doing in rural areas that have excess. doing in rural areas that have excess, access to an excess power grid.
But the problem is, is that they can put a drain on that power grid as well.
They can put a drain on the power grid, they can also, you know, if you're, if they're not, if you don't have some regulations for setbacks, you're gonna, there's gonna be some significant issues on, noise on that.
Even, they, some of them vibrate too, I believe, I read.
All those fans are, I mean, it's gonna be like being beside the vent shaft at the mine. I mean, if that's, gives you some, in fact, they're probably worse than that, 'cause like I say, according to what I, I found out, they're, they're talking about these things being 85 decibels, and a jet's, jet's at 90. If you're standing right there, so, I mean, you need to be, uh, you know, we're, we're gonna just have some significant setbacks on these things.
Either that or have, they can insulate it like trains?
Well, they can't insulate them. They gotta, the fans.
Cool.
The fan is to, is to pull the heat away, they've got, they gotta have an extreme amount of airflow, or it'll burn those servers up, so you're talking about, you know, they, either foliage or barrier walls or something to deflect that sound, if you're gonna have anything like that, because, but there, there's no way that they can insulate those things and.
So they have to be kind of open air to some degree in order to.
Well, not, they're not open air, but they're vented.
Pull them up, that's what I mean, they need to be able to circulate.
Yeah, you cannot restrict the airflow in them, they'll melt them down.
Okay.
So, here, they're wanting to put these, Johnny?
Well, the, the one going in up in Marsh Town, I'm told, is going out there at the old BASF, Lowland, which, I mean, that's, that's probably not gonna be a bad idea to put it out there, I mean, it's a, it's a brown field.
Substation there in White Pine's pretty far out.
But they, they can't be, they gotta have where they can get a hold of power, and a lot of it, I mean, like, to the tune like Oshkosh type power consumption, where they, you know, they had to build a new substation for them. These, these things are, they're monsters as far as consuming electricity.
Like how close is that?
Uh, within probably.
Probably, they may join each other, these containers.
How, how far, Mr. Brian, you probably, maybe a mile?
Yeah, something, something like that.
You wouldn't wanna go out very far.
You wouldn't wanna go terribly distant. With, and, and in your research, did you, you were across anybody that said one's gonna come in and leave?
I'm not so far, but they're trying to get rid of that one in Clever County, and I don't know what, how that'll outcome, but there is nothing that they had in, and, and I kinda felt sorry for those old boys of ours, because there's nothing that they had in that would prevented it from happening, and they're taking a lot of heat over the fact that, hey, you should've stopped this, well, they're.
They don't have zoning.
They don't, they don't have anything that would stop it, and then if it does leave, there is no, nothing there that says they have to clean these things up.
Yeah, okay.
And so, you know, we talked about with the solar farm that was going in at White Pine, uh, Virginia has a thing on their stuff on solar farms that you have to post a bond there to clean the stuff up afterwards, you can't leave any, you know, you gotta restore it, and I think if, if we're building this from scratch, all of these things, we, we could easily do that right there and put that in, and make them clean the area up, because they, they can come in there and roll those containers back on, of a, a land dock, and off they go, I mean, they're gonna be 48 footers, probably, and they, and some of them may not be that big, but you're talking about something, a 48 foot container that's gonna have these things in them, and they're stacking them six to 10 in the areas that they're going to.
The, the other thing that, that I read about these, that tends to be a problem, is that when you have all these, all this computing power, you have just these racks of computers that do all this, eventually, because they work so hard, they just wear out, well, they just chuck them out, put brand new ones in, so what they were finding was, is that when they did this, because of all the, the metals that were in, the, these electronics and everything, that their landfills were getting inundated with those type, with those things, so I think from that standpoint, that when it gets to that point in time, and they start swapping out, that basically, it wouldn't go to Jerrison County landfill, they'd have to find a commercial landfill to take it to. I mean, I mean, we, you know, who knows, you just don't know, if, if they bring in seven of those containers at one time, and, and the power's there, and, and you think about it, and all that switched out, that is a, that's four tractor trailer loads of material that go, that would have to go to your landfill, and, and that's, some of them got that, it's heavy metal in it, and so, and we don't want to have to deal with that, so my stipulation is, is that, hey, when you get, when you get done, you change it out, then basically, you're gonna haul it to an industrial landfill, uh, for it to be, removed.
Because if you, if you think about these things, you're gonna have, they're gonna be down to each side, they're gonna have a walkway down the center of these things, more than likely, the ones I've seen pictures of, and they're, they're gonna be stacked floor to ceiling, I assume, so if you can think about the computer, the hard drive, and you've got them stacked in there, floor to ceiling, front to back, and the computer wires and cables.
Look like a loading bucket.
They, yeah, they, they talk about these things, there's a, there's two boys that have, I thought it was a pretty good idea, they, one boy, his daddy was in the oil and gas, and they went out, and there's an outfit in Canada that's making these things, and they're, they're like $75,000 or $80,000 to get one, per container, and they decided they'd take them out, put generators on, recapture the gas where they were flaring off oil wells, and run a generator off the gas, which I thought was pretty smart, but they'd kinda come up with that idea, and they're running 37 of these 10 deals. So they've got 370 containers, I believe, is what they run, and they put them 10 to thing, and they run, they run generators on theirs.
So they have their own energy source.
They have their own energy source.
They're not, they're not tapping into the local, so they're not affecting it all.
They're not affecting that, but they are, but the thing about them, they are affecting where they put them, I mean, they've got to locate them next to those oil fields.
Yeah.
But the, they're not wanting to do anything that'd be in White Pine?
Nobody's wanting to do any of this so far, I mean, they've.
We're trying to get ahead of the game.
There has been inquiries into Jerrison County about it, with a limiting factor, and Mr. Brian probably can.
And it's, it would be a continuous load, it would be a fluctuating load, it would be continuous, and White Pine has some extra capacity, I would say.
Could you make them put it underground?
I don't.
That'd take care of a lot of the noise.
I, I don't know that they could get airflow.
Unless they were to use some abandoned mines.
There you go.
Which is already zoned industrial.
Yeah.
It's just whether or not they have the power there or not.
Well, you'd have to light up pumps and stuff, pump the mines down, put that thing in, and you have to deal with the, the moisture and all that other, that'd, that'd be a tough deal, but I'm just saying, at this point in time, they're, and, which Brian can probably elaborate, there, there has been inquiries, but there is nothing going in in Jerrison County, but, but there is in Hamlin County, and there has been in Clever County.
So, does that make, does it make the county any money at all? How do they?
Other than electricity and benefit and that, I, I don't think that there's any.
I don't know.
I mean, I don't know how they, you know, I don't know how the property tax goes, I don't know if it's a movable container, is it?
It could be considered a randomly removable, cause it's.
I mean, it would have to be taxed as, uh, real property, like, uh, you know, Bush Brothers or Magnavox, I'm not Magnavox, but when Rittenhouse here, the, the machines were taxed.
Yeah.
I don't know if they can tax that.
Personal property tax.
Personal property tax, was trying to think of, I don't know if they can come in and tax that, or how they do that, I, I, it's, it's out of my wheelhouse, we'd have to ask Ms. Sue for that.
They'd have to get themselves taxed off, I believe. I don't know if that's the case or not, uh, how it works, but, uh, I think the first thing we need to decide on is, is that what particular zone, in our zoning, we think they should go in, and, because when somebody comes to us, they're gonna say, okay, I wanna put one in, we're gonna say, all right, they're allowed in an I-1 and an I-2 zone, and they said, okay, and then we're said, but, that's gonna be subject to approval from Appalachian Electric Co-op to that this, that this I-1, I-2 property that you find has sufficient power, otherwise, they would have to come back and ask for rezoning for that property around the area that they wanted that to be I-1 or I-2, okay? So, that gives them direction, that, right there, per se, we're gonna say, okay, yeah, just because we have an I-1 zone doesn't necessarily mean that we're gonna make this site specific, and, and the stipulation's gonna be, if AEC says we don't have the power, then they don't have the power, and we're gonna say, no, so, but I think, you know, I don't know that we just come out and say we're gonna let them be in an A-1 zone, just because it's around that, I think what we're gonna have to look at is that we need it to be I-1 or I-2, and, so, or both, as far as that goes, okay? So, that, that's one thing we need to determine, and then, basically, at that point in time, we're gonna say, okay, uh, here are the setbacks that you're gonna have to be in that zone, in this industrial zone here, and he's giving here somewhere between 300 and 400 feet, all right, for the noise, so, give that to, in fact, if you're thinking here, you've got a track and land, and so you've got 400 foot this way, and 400 feet this way, and 400 feet this way, you can see right now that you've eat up some acreage, a chunk of acreage already, really about, about five acres.
Well, and, and you're talking.
That's before you even get to the site where you can actually send them in.
Well, you're talking about the side, it's gonna have to be minimum 100 foot wide, 'cause you can't even get the truck in there to drop the containers, the sides aren't 100 foot wide, 'cause you're rolling off a 40, 48 foot trailer off of a 85 foot rig.
But, but, but still, yeah, that, that, that's true, but, so you got 400 this way, 400 this way, 400 this way, 400 that way, well, that automatically gives you 400 foot of, of area right there, because they're gonna have to sit in that area right there, you're gonna have to have the, you're gonna have to have the road drainage, no matter what.
A 400, if you're 400 foot, that's.
You're gonna have to, you're probably.
That's 160,000 square feet, so that's four, almost five acres of buffer.
Buffer, and so, then whatever site that you have in there.
43,560.
Left, for, for, to actually put the things in there, depending on how much it is, so, let's say it takes another three acres, so at the minimum, you're looking at eight, nine acre tract.
So you do, do you set the minimum at 10 acres?
Well, I, I.
You wouldn't quite have to have quite that much, you'd have to have the buffer zone with stuff, but it's condensed area when they.
Right.
The actual building, it wouldn't take it through three acres, maybe an acre.
Well, I guess my thing is, is that if you put, if you put a 400 foot setback all the way around this, then that's gonna, that's gonna dictate, that's, what, everything left, left after that is gonna be dictated, how they, how much they want.
Right.
So, uh, but what it does is, when they come in, they see that, then, if they're gonna look for a piece of property to meet your criteria, they know they're gonna have to meet those setbacks.
Right.
And that's how much acreage you're gonna have to purchase to make this thing work. So, he, he said in here, basically 300 to 400 feet, uh.
That would mean, that would need to be, need to be at least 800 feet square, which would be 640,000 square feet.
Yeah.
I did do a calculator, I put.
Either way.
Four zeros in, and eight times eight is 64.
Either way, what we, we're dealing here is, is the high noise level, and so, if, 'cause basically what he's got, other recommendations are right here, he says, from 30, 40 feet from the installation, he wants a 70 decibel level, and at 60, 65 at 300 feet, well, if we're at 400 feet, then we're gonna be well below probably the 60, 65 decibel level, and I think people could tolerate that. I think they could tolerate that, uh, it still might be a hum, you may hear it as far as that goes, but it's not like it's, it's gonna be, you know, an airplane taking off.
There may need to be some other mitigation in there as well.
Well, Mr. Gregg, he said that, based on what he's talked to other cooperatives and other people that dealt with this, that, that he would highly recommend sound barriers on the exhaust side of those fans.
Okay, which could mean some sort of vegetative thing, or.
Vegetative.
A wall, like they do at the interstate, or anything like that.
Something.
They could put a noise barrier, you know, that's why they, they do those in the residential areas, to deflect, deflect the noise back, uh, the opposite way.
And we're.
I guess the thing is, that we could, we could, we could make it subject to, that we actually would go out there, and with, with the, uh, sound meter, and actually, uh, determine how far back was the decibel level of that, uh, so.
But like you say, the, the majority of it is where this thing can go at all, it's gonna be controlled by Appalachian, 'cause I mean, if they.
It'd be vegetal.
Or, I guess KUB would be down there in the bottom end of, you know, if they wanted to go into Strawberry Plains, KUB's right there, they've got the corner down there, so.
So maybe we need to look at that, because, let's see, what, Marsh Town is in part of our county?
Marsh Town's in the corner of White Pine.
Utilities is in part of our county, and Sevier County, I think, is, covers a portion of Jerrison County, is that not correct? Yeah.
Would you have to ask TVA about them too?
Yeah. You've got KUB and, and MUS, Sevier, and NUS.
Yeah.
So.
It'd be the power suppliers.
The power suppliers.
They're going, TVA's not gonna be, I mean, they're a factor with A, with Appalachian, but Appalachian is the one that's going up to make the decision of, in their area, do we have the power?
Well, TVA can't produce the power.
Uh, they can, yeah, they, they, that's not.
It's just a matter of when it can flow through us.
Yeah.
Or generate.
Well, the other thing is, is, the other thing that he's got in here that we need to consider is this, okay, because we do this already for, for people coming in here, let's say for instance, that, you know, basically, you may need to extend, extend a water line, as far as that goes to your development, because you don't have enough wa, pressure or flow, all right, so developers already do that to a certain extent, but what he's saying is, is this right here, it says, all right, you're wanting to come here, you're wanting to do this, and if I'm gonna have to run new power lines, you're gonna have to pay for it.
Exactly.
What about the roads to get in and out of it all? I mean, we.
It would be the same thing.
We need to have some stipulation on that, that they pay for the improvement up front.
So, and, and those improvements basically would be, 'cause I, I think what it would be is, is 'cause Appalachian would get hung, or whoever it would be, they would get hung with all that, and then you run that, run that new infrastructure in there, and then all of a sudden, boom, 'cause they're mobile.
They're gone.
They're gone, and you, and you don't recoup your money.
That's where the bonds come in.
Well, he says that's for future costs and put the site cleanup, my thing is this, is, is that when they came in with, with a site plan for this, I think before that site plan gets approved, I think those improvements have to be in place.
Are the, are the bonds, won't we have to give them the same thing we do on, like a developer or whatever plant, I mean, they can pull a bond, letter of credit, or whatever.
Okay, I guess that would be fine.
I mean, that's.
As far as that goes, so.
I'd rather them pay for it up front, but I'm just saying legally.
If we've got the bond.
We wouldn't probably approve a site plan unless it met those criteria.
So if they, if they had a.
If they chose to do it, fine, if they chose not to do it, then they wouldn't be getting an improved site plan.
So there's a bond for it to do the improvements, and then there's gonna be a bond.
To clean it up.
Clean it up, so there will be two, and one, the one bond will be resolved, once the improvements are put in, we can release that one, the other one's gonna be there until the time they, they leave.
It's got to be in place until they.
And I don't know how long that'll be.
And so, then the other question is, who do we get to help us say that, yeah, it's cleaned up, I mean, does Appalachian say that, does, uh, you know?
I don't know, uh, because like I say, the way the technology, the way technology changes, they could be in business one day, and there could be something new come out that takes its place, and those guys just saying, just walking away, all right, so we've got seven, or four, four to seven tractor trailer loads of material. Alright, so we've got seven, or four, four to seven tractor trailer loads of material there, that we've gotta dispose of. And whatever that cost is to get that, then that's what that bond would need to be. I don't think they're gonna have, I don't think we're gonna have a lot of contamination on the site. I'm just thinking it's the, it's the, uh, the byproduct of this that we, we'd end up having to get rid of.
Well, that's like those boys out in wild, and stuff where they're, where they're putting those wind farms up. They gotta change the blades every so often. And the problem with those blades is, those things, you can't have a, a four hundred foot blade that has crack. And when they put them in their landfills out there right now, they can't even, those blades are so slick, they can't even crush them with a dozer, can't keep a dozer on them long enough, and they're having to bury them in the county landfills out there.
I saw, I saw that, but I saw today, I read an article the other day, that, you know what those things are great for? Building bridges. And they, cause they're so strong, and they, carbon fiber, that they're taking them now, and they're using them as beams, and they're laying them in, and they're building bridges on chicken.
I'm all for that.
But if they're cracking, it's windmill.
Well, they do. I mean, they're, they're, they're strong, that's what they're saying. And they'll take them and, and make a big beam out of them, and they'll lay them, they'll lay them in, in bridges as, as beams. So, alright, so, let's just get back to task here, uh, so, we need, now we need to zone, that basically when the site plan comes in, one of the things that will be, that we'll be looking for is, is that we will have approval from the electric utility that will be providing the power, okay? So the first thing is, is that they're gonna have to go to that electric utility, and they're gonna say, this is where you can gonna go. And if there's industrial land there, then they're, they're ahead of the game. If not, then they gotta come and ask for rezoning. Okay?
Let me ask you-
Now, and, and so then, what you gotta take into consideration, is that when you rezone this property I one or I two, and they leave, then whatever else is left in I one and I two can go in there. So-
So that begs the question, because we're, we have talked about the A two zone for the agriculture manufacturing zone. Do we need to look at a new zone, Mr. David, that has this in it, and make it narrow? Kinda like what we're talking about, the A two zone being a narrow thing, where, yeah, you can build a nice metal building, and you can grind flour in it, you can make processed tomatoes in it, but you can't, you can't sell it to a ball bearing factory. And so if this is a crypto mining, do we put it in its own zone? And can we do that?
We could. I don't think that's necessary. The I two zone is the heavy industry.
See, I, I'm not good, I'm not good with the I two zone, and I'll tell you why.
We don't even have any in the county.
I know, but, but, and Terry Dougherty was very upfront with this, and Mr. Paul heard him talk about this, and I think he had a very valid point. I've admitted it upfront, we messed up on that one. But that I two zone opens up some things that I don't think you want in certain areas, and I mean, you're talking about asphalt plants, chemical plants, uh, what else, Mr. Paul? Uh, landfills.
Yeah, landfills, what else?
Uh, it, it opens up to hazardous waste.
Okay.
And so, um-
Anything that's allowed in I two zone could go in whatever zone is I two, let's say it was all for-
Yeah, so, so, and I, and I understand if we do that, you know, i- if you put it in there, basically, you're saying, well, you're putting it in there cause you don't wanna ever zone it that way. But if you do zone it that way, I think that's a, I think that's a mistake, because you're opening it up to a lot of other things that you've got in that zone.
Okay, so, if we're gonna, so if we come up with a new zone, we call it I three. And basically, right now, the only thing that would be allowed in the I three zone is, uh, these blockchain servers are crypto. And then, if there were other things that, that are similar to that, that the technology advances is, we say, okay, that has to go in the I threes with. Yeah, or, because that's the only, gonna be the only thing in that zone, and so, when you rezone that property, you don't have, that's, that's it.
So, and if they pick up and move, and somebody else wants to put something there, if it's not the same, if it's not, it's gotta come back to us for rezoning.
Rezoning, yeah.
So that, that holds a lot of control there, that holds a lot of, where we can, we don't have to just freely open that up to other stuff. We can say, look, no, we're not gonna do that.
Okay.
That's a good point.
So this is a, so this would make this sort of a two-step process. So we would have to have something that come before the cities and the county to create an I three zone. And then, we would have something that comes in, once the I three zone is created, stating that, that crypto mining or blockchains would be allowed in an I three zone. Okay? Is that correct?
Yes.
So we gotta establish, we'd have to establish the zone first, which would be its own resolution, I assume. And then we would fall back and say, these are the guidelines for crypto mining and blockchain, uh, server installations. We're saying that the, the zone they would go into would be an I three, and then, basically, we would have all the stipulations in there that they would have to meet, to, to qualify for the site and, and everything else, correct?
Right, and we probably, um, the county, I don't know if the county would wanna rezone property on the front end of I three, because that would really limit property for that use only-
I would wait till- Because-
Well, I agree, what I'm trying to, what I'm getting ready to say is that you'd almost have to respond to a request.
That's what I'm saying, yes.
I mean, they've gotta determine Appalachian, or Marsh Town Utility, or K U B, or whatever, they have gotta actually say that we've got, here's, here's a circle, and anything within that, yeah, we can supply you power, anything out of that, we can. And then that's, that's gonna determine, I don't think you can-
You couldn't do it on the front end, not like under zoning districts.
Uh-uh.
Well, we, we don't have any I two, so, basically, that doesn't necessarily mean that we wouldn't zone something I two. But here, we wouldn't have any I three, that doesn't necessarily mean that there might not be a site coming along that we wouldn't zone I three.
And I think it's dictated by where that power is.
Oh, absolutely.
I mean, that's, and, and they can't say, we can make the case that that's not spot zoning, because that is a, that's an absolute factor in this. And there may be other technologies that come along that, that falls in this, that we are not even thinking about now.
Where does Clayburn County get that power for theirs?
Uh, Powell Valley Electric had, uh, had excess power, and this, I bet this thing, from what I saw the pictures of it, I bet it don't sit, uh, I bet it don't sit half mile from that thing, from the substation. I mean, it, it's literally like, you're all substationed there at Jefferson City for Oshkosh, and Oshkosh will be able to, it is, it's line of sight with that substation. But apparently, Powell Valley Electric had, uh, had enough excess power, and they come in there, and, and for the electric utilities, it's a, it's a tremendous thing, is it not, Brad?
It is, and you would want to have it in close proximity to the substation, just for reliability. If they were seeing a lot of blanks on a computer system like that, it wouldn't be good for them. So the closer to a substation, the better out there.
What value does this thing have for the county? I mean, how many jobs does it produce?
I don't know that it's gonna produce that many jobs. I mean-
It'll, it'll produce, the guy that does the great work for it, the one that hauls the rock.
The one that goes out and mows the grass.
Well, mows the grass, you know.
Fan motors.
Fan motors, electric, I mean, but you're, you're not talking about a lot of revenue coming in the county on this thing.
So, we ought to tax it.
I don't know that you can tax it, that's what I'm saying. I, I don't know. I mean, that's-
They can, they can put it on wheels, and we'll charge them a wheel tax.
That's the way I like it.
So I think, I think one thing that, that we, if we, if you feel comfortable with, that we could actually take action to create an I three zone.
I'll make that motion.
Okay. So I've got a motion to create a, a, an I three zone.
I two?
I three. We already have I two.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, I got, I got a proper motion, and a second. Any other discussion? Alright, all of the favors say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. So that'll be the first thing, then it will go to the, to the cities and the counties, and I'll explain to them, then basically we go while we're doing an I three zone. And then the next thing would be, is, is that we're gonna come to determination, then, that when we do this criteria, anybody that comes and wants to do one of these, we're gonna say, that's fine, it's gotta go in I three zone, and here are the conditions for that I, that site that's gonna, where this is gonna go. Here are your setbacks, this is what you're gonna have to do for your power, and, and everything else, and here are the performance bonds you're gonna have to put up for the improvements, and then the bonds to take care of it for, uh, site cleanup. Is there anything else that, that we're not covering?
I'm sure there is.
Well, here, my thing is, I know we're gonna put the setbacks in, and, from that standpoint. And we could put, here's the thing, we could say, okay, here is your property, right here, and we could say, from there to there, I, even if you have the four hundred foot setbacks, if that decibel level exceeds a certain level, you're gonna have to do something to deflect that, that. And I, so, so if we said, right here, sixty D B, alright? Here's your property line, as far as that goes. If anything exceeds sixty D B, and that's, noises come in that direction, then you're gonna have to put something there to deflect it back the other way.
Okay, how, are you, uh, I'm not good enough with that to know sixty D B, what that is. Is that, is that harmful without earplugs? Or is it har- is that, is that low enough? Is that a truck?
Eighty-five D B's harmful.
Eighty-five, okay, what's sixty, Mike? Is it a truck running? Is it a?
Let me check.
Airborne.
Let's see what give those signals.
Let's see. Normal conversation and background music is sixty D B. A vacuum cleaner is seventy-five.
Okay, so, sixty, if, if the property line, if it's over sixty D B, they have to have a-
Noise deflector.
Yes.
Okay.
I, I think that's good.
Are y'all voting on that tonight? If you can do the same, take it to the city site now?
I don't know, I don't see why not. I mean, saying, if we, if we feel comfortable with, I mean, if y'all feel comfortable with what we've come up with here for these sites, then we can put that in a form of a motion, and we can put it in a form, uh, form to get it into a resolution, and we've got all we've got here. If you're not, and you wanna do more research, I, I don't have a problem with that, okay? I just, you know, it's new, it's, it's, it's-
I just kinda get interested in the thing, and it doesn't, I, I think it's common. I just don't know when.
Make sure they haul up there.
Well, that, that's one of the things that we would put in there, that, that all the waste from it would have to be taken to a industrial lands, landfill. But that being said, there's a difference between us telling them that, and them actually doing it, and walking away from the project. So whatever we have there, we gotta have a bond that's big enough to cover us getting it cleaned up.
Long source.
Yeah, and I don't know how we determine that. We'd have to do a little bit of research on it.
I didn't check on, to perform one transaction, it'd be the equivalent of what electricity it takes to run a average household fifty-three days.
Yeah, I, I read that somewhere before, yes. Yeah. That's just one transaction.
These things absolutely suck with power.
Build another dam.
So-
That mean you'd have to build another river, Chad.
So my question is, do you, do you feel comfortable with what we've discussed? Do you think that we could come up with enough guidelines that you feel, I mean, tonight? If not, just tell me, it's, it's not a problem, cause this, this is, this is new to us. And if you feel like you need to do some research or whatever, and you don't feel like we've got enough here covered, as far as it goes, cause basically what we're going off of is what, basically Appalachian said, hey, this is the problems that we've seen other places on these. And it was a good starting point, but I don't know if that's, you know-
Why don't we come up with something longer that we had left out in that? Can we?
There you go.
Can you add it to it then?
We'd go back and we could, we would amend it, and we'd have to go back through the whole process.
All the regional planning commissions is in, out to the county.
But, well, look, that's the way it's supposed to work, though.
Yeah.
Cause it just shows that we don't know everything, and then, and this is a way, our way of fixing it, okay?
Yeah.
I, I, I mean, we, we talked about that as being a big problem, but, but that's part of the, the solution as well, you know?
How would you find out about making money for the county off of itself then? I mean-
I, I, I don't know, I-
It's not a zoning issue for starters.
No, it, it's not, it's, so-
I mean, I wouldn't let this hold us back on anything we're trying to do in the planning commission.
Um, I'm sure Miss Susan could tell you if it can be taxed as personal property, if it has to be a permanent structure, or how that is, and, and they may not even have regulations on this. This thing is, is just really a new deal.
Okay. I, yeah. I'm just more looking at protecting the county instead of determining if we're gonna make money off of it, uh, so. So what do you think? I mean, you, you tell me, give me some feedback. Do you wanna, you, you want us to put this in, what, we've got these guidelines in? Is that enough? You feel comfortable with it? Okay, alright. So basically, the first thing we're gonna say is, is that for this, that we're gonna say it's gonna have to go into an I three zone, which we're gonna get created, alright? And then, basically, that I three zone would have, the site where it would, they wanna go, would have to be rezoned to I three. And it would also have to be subject to approval to whichever utility was gonna provide it power, stating that there was sufficient power there to do it. So, that's a big step.
You're at, you're asking, and you want in the thing, or what we're saying is that we want it in writing-
Yes.
Wherever they are.
Yes.
I just wanna clarify on that, that we want it in writing, from Appalachian, Marsh Town Hamlin, K U B, whoever, we want it in writing this board that there is sufficient power to locate it there.
Okay.
Or that they can, if they, if they were to run generators, which I don't think they could afford to fuel, but if they drill a gas well, or whatever, I mean,
Right.
They'd be that, but they has, have to be somebody that signs off, says they can have the power, and show us a letter.
And then- They pay for the upgrades.
Yes.
They pay for the increase in the infrastructure that they attack.
And, and here's the thing, they're probably gonna get that letter before they even come to ask for this property to be rezoned I three. Cause it's gonna be a loophole.
Yeah.
Okay. So, and, and here's the other thing, if, if county commission is not comfortable with the I three zone that they, they're requesting, and then they don't rezone the property, then they're back to square one. And so, it's not that we're keeping them out, but we're, we're trying to protect ourselves. So, we're, one of the things we're gonna say is, now it's going I three zone. The second thing is, that it would have to be subject to approval from the local utility, that there's ample power there, and they would be comfortable with, with it going at that site, okay? And that's written approval for that. Alright, so they're gonna bring that to us then, and then, on their site plan, we're gonna tell them that this is what's gonna be required. That in your site, there will be four hundred foot setbacks for the thing to be in from your property lines, okay? The other thing's gonna be, on their site is gonna be, is this, is that, basically, of course, we're gonna make them, do some landscaping, or anything, something of that nature. But the other thing is, is that the decibel level cannot exceed sixty decibels, uh, at their, at their property lines, or they would have to put in, uh, a noise barrier. Now, that being said, they can make determination then, how many of these units they can set in to keep the decibel level under sixty. They wanna go more than that, then they're gonna have to spend the money to keep the noise contained, alright? So, that's gonna be self-explanatory when, I think, when it gets there to do that. So, we sort of covered the site, we took care of the noise, setbacks for the property lines, uh, from that standpoint. And then the next thing would be, is, is that upfront, any kind of major improvements that would be necessary for utilities, they would have to pay for that upfront, okay? Or issue a bond, if they wanted to go ahead and start, issue a bond until those improvements were made. But my thing is gonna be is this, is that this utility that's sitting right there, looking and says, okay, we've got the power, but we're gonna have to extend this line- we've got the power, but we're going to have to extend this line, say, three-quarters of a mile. You're going to have to pay for that. And you're going to have to pay for it before you get the power. Or you're going to have to put a bond up, one way or the other. So if the utility's not stuck then for that expense, then these guys pull them upstate and...
You know, they could, they say they can, what they tell me, they, they unplug, and they can roll them on a trailer, and they can roll out that night.
All right, so we're going, we're, that, that's one bond that you're going to have to have in place. And then the other one is, is that they would then have to post a bond then for site cleanup. And that's the one they will have.
And are you putting the stipulation that, that the, the stuff out of there cannot go into our landfill?
Yes, yes, yeah. That, uh, all of that waste must go to a commercial landfill.
Where's the commercial landfill at?
Uh, I guess Tidy Waste has probably got that one up very low level.
Yeah.
It's probably the, or not Tidy, it's not Tidy Waste anymore, it's, uh, GFR, or whoever it is. It's still McGuffin's, but...
Uh, what about this, as far as the site in there? I mean, I don't know if they're going to need bathrooms, or with, so, or anything of that nature. So do we have to have any kind of set, area set aside for, for septic approval? As far as it goes for this site plan?
Real realistically, for the fourth party, yeah.
I guess they could.
This place...
They've got 400 feet of setback, I suspect they can, it would, it wouldn't qualify as a subdivision um, under state law, and the health department wouldn't address it unless they were actually putting one in.
Don't you need to have a minimum on site?
Well, wait, I don't know, I think there's setbacks, you're going to take care of that.
Well, all the other zones do. You mean have some?
Well, if there's 400 feet of setback, that means, like I said a few minutes ago...
That's five acres.
Probably got to be 800 by 800, I think side by 800. You know, if something's in the middle 400 in every direction...
I put five acres.
And that's 64,000 square feet.
It, it's going to take more than five acres.
I put 10.
Well, I think eight, I think eight, eight acres would work.
Plus the inside, though, if you're, if it's 100 foot wide inside, it's basically 500. 500 by 500. Is that all right?
Yeah.
So five, yeah, 500 by 500.
Whatever it is, needs to be part of the...
What about drainage and, and, uh...
Well...
That'd be part of the site plan, right?
The site plan...
That we have in place.
That we already have in place. So we, minimum size, eight acres? All right. Eight acres. And then out of acres, you got to make setbacks work, yeah, so...
Still keep the noise down.
Yeah, but what did, here's the thing, this, this criteria, somebody wants to do one, come in here and sit down and say, okay, this is the type of property I got to go look for if I want to do this in Jersey County. And then they can go do it. They can go do it. We're, we're not stopping them, we're, we're, we're just giving them, we're just giving some guidance.
Business, I don't know that you can stop them.
I know, all right.
But if you don't have these...
I'm going to put the bond right here to be determined on utility company.
You're talking about the infrastructure bond? Well, what about the, the road? What about the roads and stuff, and if they got, if, if we got to do... I mean, let's say they find a site, it's on a, it's on one of county roads 18-foot wide.
Think there's going to be a lot of traffic in that?
I don't think there's going to be a lot of traffic, I'm just saying, if you put it, if you strictly say it's the utility company determining that infrastructure bond, then you, you say that the county has no thing, and if they, they may want to put in, they may want to put in a 100-acre site.
All right.
And they want to put, you know, when there, there is more traffic, and they have to do the road upgrade, or...
All right.
Whatever.
All the improvements in, we'll, we'll just put all the improvements. And part of that would be, utility company, whatever they determine.
Yeah.
All right, and then, I think what we're, have to do on the site cleanup is, is we're going to have to look and says, okay, what are you going to have here? And then we'll look at what you're going to have, and we'll says, this is the type, this is the bond we might have.
You think you all could find out on any of these things if they've had to clean them up, right?
I'll just check on everything.
Okay.
And I also check on, on what the average size are, depending on the locations that there is after right now.
I, I think eight acres may be a little much.
What about, there's, there's one, I know, there's one in Oneida, there's one in Johnson City. Uh, there's, uh, there's, uh... Over in Powell Valley, and there's one down in Knox County.
Here's my question. What happens if these things catch on fire?
I know that, but I'm just saying, if, what, I mean... Well, you, you've got them contained inside a steel container, I understand that.
And they're inside that buffer zone.
They're inside the buffer zone.
Electricity's going to trip.
When it trips out and kills the fan, you've killed the oxygen to the fire.
Okay, if you, all right.
It's a meltdown.
Uh, it's, it's going to melt it down, but I, I've kind of thought that one through.
And so basically what you're saying is, there'll be no talk to humans coming from it?
I didn't say that.
Okay. All I'm saying is, is when the fire department rolls in there, I just want them to be able to be prepared, if they're going to have to do this, that they know what they're going to be...
I hadn't thought about that.
All right.
Would it affect the substation?
Uh, no, I don't think it would, you know, other than that.
If you don't have the liquids, that you don't have the combustible materials too much inside that thing, contain the medical panel.
All right. I guess we'll just cross that bridge when we get there.
Well, maybe, maybe with, they've got to have an emergency plan...
Okay.
In that, I mean, they've got a, it's got to be filed with the power supply, you know, Appalachian's got to be filed with whatever fire department it goes with, the EMA of the county.
Yeah.
That, that's, that wouldn't be a bad idea to make a...
The EMA, yeah, yeah. All right. Okay. Anything else? So we get all about these things?
I think so, I can't think of anything else.
All right. There's nothing else then?
Well, let me ask Ms. David a quick, have you done or heard of any of these already?
I read a little something about one up in Limestone, where my dad used to teach high school. There's, it went to court or something. And then there's the one I've, I've heard about in Clayton County, that's really all I am familiar with, and this is all new to me, quite honestly.
Okay, I'm just curious.
I've got no, I haven't talked to any of the planners about this sort of thing, or...
You said the one in Limestone went to court.
Yeah, that's what's said on the internet, I don't know, I...
I'm just curious what, what it was over.
I don't know.
Can you, based on this information that Appalachian got us, can you reach out to some of these planners that do those areas? Like the one in Oneida, or...
Knox?
Uh, Knoxville, or Johnson City, or whoever, and, and...
Certainly.
See if there's, what they're, you know, what they've, what they've seen.
So do you want to wait till he gets back to us before we take action then, or not?
I'm good with what we got, I think, I think it's a, I think it first...
I want to make sure, I guess I want to, I think we should make sure we're, we're good, and if we're good tonight, that's fine. Because Tim has to go to, you know, it's not all about Tim, I get, and my wife used to say, it's not always about you, Dave. But, um, you know, he's going to have to go to each and every regional planning commission in the county.
My parent, he's going to...
I'll be doing a lot.
He'll be doing as well, yeah, that's right.
And any of you who want to come, welcome.
If you're good with it, fine, I can't think of anything else, it sounds like you've covered it pretty well, but sometimes you don't know what you don't know.
Okay.
All right, can, can, can we make the motion that we want to do this, and we're not going to, you're not going to be going off, when, when will be the first meeting?
They go March, March, to get it to county in April.
Okay, so we go March?
Cities first.
Yeah, right, that's one of the cities.
So you've got, you've got a couple of weeks here before the first meeting?
Yeah, see, then we should, we won't get March, because it's already passed the deadline to get on the agenda, so it'll be April.
I don't think...
It may be, so...
But what I'm saying is that, can we make the motion, and then if Mr. David finds out that they sunk a glaring issue that we missed, add that to it, or...
I'd say that would be, I think it'd be the way to go.
All right, and we'll get started on this, because if we're started on this, then if they come, they have to wait till we get it done, is that correct?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
All right. So... So do I have a motion?
I have, I can make a motion, yeah.
Okay. I got you. A motion to cover what we've talked about here, that you got in your notes, right, David? I-3 zone, these sites specific, specific based upon utilities saying that they have the power to cover it there.
In writing?
In writing, and then basically, then they would come before us, we'd have to get the property rezoned, okay, to I-3, allow that to happen. And then basically, we would come in, we would say, here are our setbacks, we're taking care of our noise level, uh, per se, and then the other thing would be...
An emergency plan?
Emergency plan, and a, a, a performance bond for the improvements, and a bond to cover cleanup.
And sound about to exceed 60 decibels at the property line?
And the waste that they want to wipe?
Yeah, all waste must go into a commercial landfill. Eight acres.
Eight acres?
Yes.
Ditto on that, on that.
So I've got a proper motion. Do I have a second?
I'll save it.
Okay, in a second. Any other questions? Reservations? Okay. Uh, I'd say we'll, we'll have a little time here, if something pops up, we can try to add to it, cover ourselves.
One, one quick thing, um, John caught me off, a little bit off guard on that. If, if they were, somebody was to start this and become vested in it before all this happened, that they probably could, um, keep going forward with it, if we hadn't adopted anything. Because a planning commission made a recommendation doesn't mean it would be in play or...
I understand, in other words, we've got to get it off of...
I, I felt like I misrepresented...
Well, we'll just keep it a secret, and nobody will know.
That's right, yeah.
Heard that, Steve? All right. I just, there's no secrets in Jersey County.
Boy, that's true.
So, okay, all right, so now then, we got a proper motion, I got a proper second. And we're both, all of the favorites say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so we know what we need to do.
I'll write this up, I'll get a copy to Terry, and he can distribute it however he feels, and make sure everybody's...
Okay.
Good with it, does that make sense?
Yeah.
Okay.
All right. All right, so, David, are you ready to move on?
Ready as I'll ever be.
All right. The next item of discussion, a moratorium for no more than four laws, to come through the planning commission for six months, or until a land use plan is updated. If you remember, going back to old business, we took action on this a, at our last meeting, and legal says that we didn't have the authority to do it. All we can do is make a recommendation, and then that has to go before county commission, and they would have to vote on it, okay? So that's where we stand, so it's back on us tonight, uh, here on our agenda, and, and that's what you would be, we would be looking for.
Well, I'm going to again make the motion with the verbiage on the recommendation of Doug Green, that says the same thing, but to add that this is recommended to go to county commission for approval.
Okay, I've got a proper motion.
I'll save it.
In a second, okay. Now the discussion. Discussion. I, 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 I understand what we're doing. I don't know, I've looked at, I, I've tried to do some research to get some numbers here, to, and I don't know, I mean, I understand what we're doing, but I, I don't understand what we're doing. I, I guess what I want to know is, is this. I want to know the direction that we want to go in our county. I want to know that if, uh, basically, if we're not going to have any more commercial property, and we're not going to have any more industrial property, and we don't want any more residential properties, then what do we want? And, and that's where I'm at, and I, and I've been struggling with it. And, and I try to get some answers from people to say, okay, if we continue to grow number-wise, where does that put us in, in, in the county? So I've reached out to the department heads of our county to give me, try to give me a feel for what they think they would need in the future if we continue to grow. Because basically, I think, we, we grow 10,000 people in 10, in 10 years. Because about 1,000 people a year, I think, is, is basically what we've grown. And you look at our land mass in comparison to other counties, and, you know, basically, I don't know that our density may not be higher, but then again, we also have two lakes in our county that eat up a lot of...
Thirty, 32,000 acres.
Acres, okay, from that standpoint. So, I, I, I don't know, I, I'm at the, I guess my thing is this, is that when we do this, and, and I know it's only for six months, and everything else, I'm looking at, does this help us, or does it, does it hurt us? It may help in some regards, because it may say, okay, we just give this more time to look at this. But then it may hurt us in other regards, because if this were to come into play, per se, and there was no more development, then sometimes, to me, the industry that's booming in this county is building. And we never look sort of sometimes at building as an industry, we, we, we just, we just don't look at it that way, but it is, to a certain extent, because it employs a lot of people. So I, that's where, that's where I'm at, I'm, I'm, I'm at a crossroads over it, and I, I just want to speak back from what y'all, what y'all think, uh, from that standpoint. I, I understand the reasoning sort of behind it, but then I'm looking at that reasoning, and I'm, I'm sort of questioning it, because I can't, the numbers don't sort of add up for me, from what my department, the department heads of the county are telling me. And, and maybe I'm missing something, and, and I'm not saying, am, but, but I reached out to them to find out what, what they felt about the growth of where we were at in the county. And, uh, so, I don't, I'm, I'm, I'm just curious, is, if you all had any input on how you feel about it?
Well, I mean, for my part, Mr. Terry, I, I, I don't want to stop that industry. I don't want to attack any industry, but all I'm saying is that if we, if we're looking at the land use plan, and, and what our objectives are, and if we want things balanced, if you don't have those objectives, and you don't have that plan, how do you know that you're not doing away with areas you are going to need? If you, if you approve that subdivision now, if you approve the 100 house, or the 200 house, or whatever...
I understand that.
On development, how do you know where the balance is if you, if you have all these objectives in this land plan, and you're not, you've not even got them solidified? And, and all I'm saying is that if we know, if we're not going to have any more industry, and it appears that way, that we're not, I mean... Mr. Sales brought those figures... They, they, he brought those figures about what we had approved for commercial, and what we have approved for industrial in the last 15 years. So if we're not, then the county's got to figure out a way to fund that, because the model we're using of approving houses and developing residential only, and not approving businesses, and not, every time a business tries to come in, is, it gets kicked out, and I'm not saying that the people in the county are doing, I'm just saying that it, it's not happening. So if it's not doing that, that model is unsustainable on the way we do it. It, it has to be, if you're, if the houses are where it's built, there is a definite bump the first year or two from those houses. But at some point in time, when you start adding the kids, when you start adding the sheriff's deputies, when you start adding extra ambulances, and all of that, as it goes down, those houses and developments become, they, they can't... those houses and developments become, they can't sustain themselves. They don't pay for what the infrastructure is. So we've got to have a different model on how we bring about that growth, if we're going to, if we're going to have that and no businesses to contribute.
Okay. I understand that. And like I said, I came to the long range, to the county, county long range planning committee, and one of my suggestions was, in this county, was to completely rezone this whole county, because then we're going to sit down, and we're going to look, and we're going to say, this is commercial, this is industrial. And we're going to establish that in this new rezone, because when zoning was done before, and I understand how it was done and everything else, but we fight too many battles in here over that. And I don't want to fight those battles anymore. I think that we come in here this time, and it's going to take some courage. I see that, I mean, it's going to take some courage. It's basically when it comes down here, if county commission can sit down and say, hey, we're looking at the best thing for Jersey County, and we're looking at this corridor, yeah, there's residential here, and there's commercial here, and there's industry here, but we're going to make this all commercial, and we're going to make this all industry. And that's where we're at, and that's the way we're going to be. And so somebody's going to stand up and say, this is the best thing for Jersey County. Now, if they can't come to that agreement, but that's what they want, then how do we, how do we ever get this land use plan adopted then without zoning that property right now? We can't. I don't see how we can, because we're always going to be on that fight, that somebody's going to be fighting, and politics is going to get involved, which I hate that word, as far as that goes. But then you're not going to rezone that property, and you're sitting there saying, you know what, that was a good thing for Jersey County, but we didn't get it through.
Okay, one of the biggest complaints that we've heard on this board, and I think Mr. Paul and myself have heard as county commission, and I'm not trying to deflect the blame, but what I'm saying is, whether it's true or not, you hear these complaints, well, you know, I bought this, and now I didn't ever expect this to be here next to me, or... So if you're doing that, and I think, I think you're right, I think it takes courage, and I think this is the first step in having courage, is that we've got to sit down and have a serious discussion about this stuff. And if you, if we say, okay, all, all the four-lane highways or all the major arteries in the county, 92, 25, 11E, we know that at some point in time they will be commercial or industrial. There'll be business on those highways. Now, it's fine, there's houses on there now. But if we come up and say right up front, hey, if you buy a house here, you understand in this county, these corridors are business corridors. There is absolutely nothing, you're not going to, Sockless Road is not going to have Super Walmart on it. It's just the way it is. But 11E and 92, they're business corridors out through there. And they will eventually, and I'm on 11E, and I hate to say it, and Brian's heard me say this very thing. I'll hate it at some point in time, but it's not a matter of if, it's a matter of when that develops down through there. And if New Market had, sir, it would develop faster. So it's a matter of the infrastructure, but if we say that upfront, and everybody knows that, they can't come in and make the argument, is, hey, I bought this house, and I didn't really think it'd ever have business there next to me.
So that brings me back to my question. If you go, if we go ahead and rezone that property then, basically when they come in here, and they're going to look at zoning, what their property is, and they're going to know that upfront, okay? So, and they won't be able to make that. But as of right now, because I understand where you're coming from, and I agree with everything, but if you're not willing to do that in this land use plan upfront, to make that, to designate those properties, do that, then what that tells me is, is that county commission is not interested in having commercial and industrial land.
Well, and I can't, I can't speak for all...
I know, but I'm just saying, that's the message, that's the message I would get.
Sure.
See?
And we're sitting there, and the other night, we were, we were sitting there, and what should have been a slam dunk, I mean, on a four-lane highway, on the corner of a road that goes back into the lime pile in my old New Market mine, an old boy wanted to build a metal fabrication shop on a half acre, and it wouldn't fit anywhere else except to be zoned I-1. I understand that. And it sat right against New Market, and had the commission voted against it, New Market would have annexed it probably on a special call meeting five days later, and they would have done it. But what I'm saying is, we still, in the county commission, couldn't, couldn't come to one accord that we said, hey, this is pretty good idea, it's right here, it's not got any problems, it's going to be a metal fabrication shop on a half acre. I mean, it's like having an operation for $29.95. You can't buy a dangerous operation for $29.95, Mr. Sir.
And that's the exact thing that I want to get away from. I don't, I don't want county commission having to make those decisions. I want the decisions already to be made, as far as that goes, in this land use plan. I want it upfront, I want it there, and because that's the best, I look at, that's the best thing I see, the way I see for the county. I think we do, and I'm not saying, I think you go down those corridors and you go back so far, and that's, you're going to say, okay, this could be commercial or industrial at that point in time, and if the profits change and everything else. And then what you've got is, is that once you get there, and let's say for instance, they needed to get some more back, well, it's already zoned there, so that may not be an issue at that point in time. I'm just saying is, is that if we have to go through these pipes every single time we zone a single piece of property, that's not the way it should be set up.
So if you're on the corridor, coming down 11E, or I am...
Yes.
I'm taxed...
No, you're not.
As a farm, because it's taxed at use.
That's correct.
And it'll never change until it changes that. My zoning does not change me one bit.
That's correct.
And if I've got a house there, it's taxed as residential.
Yes.
Because that's the use. The zoning has nothing to do with it, and I think that's where everybody's missing in the county, is they...
They think they're taxed...
They think they're taxed, going to be taxed as commercial or residential, and that's probably up to us in the county commission to get that across. But it's just like McMinn County, or Mr. Paul's heard me tell this. McMinn County down there, 35 years back, they made a priority to operate on a cash basis. And they do. They don't have any, really have any debt, let's say required here in the last year or so. But you can't start 20 years from now and do this. We can't start any earlier than we are right now. If we don't start and say, hey, we've got to have this growth, and we've got to have balanced growth. We've got to have places for people to live, we've got to have places for people to work, and I'm... I even been pondering and noodling on the idea you talked about on the residential thing, if we, if you set aside mixed use. I don't know that that's a bad idea, if you ask them for that. But what I'm saying is, if we don't start now, we're not going to get this ever done. Because 20 years from now, we're still going to have this same argument.
I understand that. I understand where we're coming from on that. That's why I say, I think that when we look at this, as far as it goes, and every time a new corridor comes into this county, which there may or may not be as far as it goes, I think we need to address it right off the bat, determine how we want that property rezoned at that point in time, and just come in and say, this is the way it's going to be. And, you know, and the thing is, is that when you think about when you rezone property, it's also a time when you can come up with some new zoning designations. And let's say for instance, you say, I've got this here, this is a beautiful road and everything else, and we would like to have some sort of scenic guidelines in place to help protect it and everything, sign heights, landscaping, this type of thing. That could go in at that time, at that zone. And what it does is, it just puts, it just puts the people on notice that, hey, if you're going to do something to this piece of property, this is what it's going to do. And then they can make a determination as if they want to spend the money to do it or not spend the money to do it. I, my thing is, is that, I don't know, I've been on here for 15 years, and we just struggle getting things zoned commercial and industrial in this county. And I don't know if that's going to change unless we do wholesale change all at one time. And then it's in place. And I just don't know if, I don't know, I don't know how county commission feels about it. I'm just saying, but for this land use plan right here, I feel like if we're going to get commercial, and we're going to have industrial land in here, then we're going to have to come up and say, we're going to have to come out and protect it right up off the bat, and say this is where it's going to be. So, where it's going to be.
And it does preclude, I mean, if somebody comes in and they want to put a development in on 11E, and they come in and say they want an R-1 designation, that's fine, if we do that. But the people that buy in that development understand that that corridor is a business corridor.
Right.
And they understand that upfront when they buy the house. There won't be any of this coming back and saying, hey, I bought this, and I didn't really think I'd ever have anything beside me. So if that's the case, all we're doing is being very upfront with everybody, and we're setting a standard that you may see development here for business, you may see it industrial or whatever, and I don't disagree with the overlays.
Okay. Later on, if they sold the house, would the new owner know?
Well, if he knows that that's a corridor, a business corridor, he can live there for the next 100 years in the house. He doesn't have to sell the house. He doesn't have to ever sell his to put a Dollar General, or a store, or industrial site, or anything on it. They can live there forever. And it's still taxed as a residential house. But what it does, it says, when he comes in to buy the house from a realtor, or the developer, or whatever, then they're going to know that that area could develop with things, and it is a business corridor, because it's on a major artery in this county.
So which means, that goes back to my point, is that to make that corridor, we need to, we would need to rezone it right off the bat. Would we not? We've got to have, I mean, it's one thing to say verbally, but it's another when it's actually voted on and goes in, and our zoning map changes to says, hey, this is the way it is.
Well, you're not, and we're never going to get there unless we have this conversation and say, in our land use plan and stuff, this is, this is going to be an objective with us. We want nice places to live, we want jobs for the county, and we've got that already, have we not, Mr. David?
Yeah.
But we're saying this, and this is how we're going to get there. We're going to get there by saying, these are the things you need to be aware of. If you come to Jersey County, if you live in Jersey County, you need to be aware of these things, because these are the goals that everybody decided they wanted to adopt.
Okay.
Or a majority of them. I don't know if everybody will ever cite anything.
That's my worry. That's my worry.
Well, I can tell you this, every pitch in baseball, you don't take a bat off your shoulder.
I understand that. I understand that. I'm just saying, I just, I just don't know, well, anyway.
I don't know if it'll pass, but I know if...
Well, I...
I know if we don't ask for it, if we don't start that conversation, it will absolutely not pass.
Okay.
Terry, may I say a word, or have three minutes, please?
Be nice to your public.
And I'll keep it professional. I just have a...
You asked for it upfront. Yeah, that's usually when I ask...
I'll pull this out, but this is the first time I've been here, and I couldn't even tell you who the secretary was to give it to. And it's on my own ignorance that I didn't know that, how you did this.
Okay, I understand.
I think something this major, how it affects, I'd just like to explain just some concern. I'm not for it or against it. I just, just some concern.
Okay. I understand. Actually, we're not really, I would have to really suspend the rules to even probably allow them to speak on this.
I mean, you're chairman, all I'm saying is, you asked for it upfront. If he was sitting here when you asked for it.
I think, and he said, you know, basically, I understand, he didn't understand the process.
I think several people didn't, but honestly, this is the first time I've ever been here. I didn't know, number one, it doesn't identify the secretary of who I could give it to. And there is some opportunity for improvement on that side of it.
Okay. Yeah, typically, when people fill those out, they just bring them up here and hand them to me, then I know that you were here to speak.
I just...
I guess the thing is, is that when we adjourn, if you want to come up and approach us at that point in time and express what you've got...
After the vote, yeah.
Okay. Well, here's the thing. A lot of people misunderstand that when we take this vote tonight, this is not set in stone. We don't get to make, this is not the final decision. This just comes as a recommendation to us. County commission is basically, will make the final decision.
Well, I have a problem with the bottom paragraph, that, and I'm a property owner, I've been a farmer for all my life.
Right.
And it says, it really burdens us property owners, that it's basically saying that the county commissioners can continue to develop a plan for years and still stay with the four. If you read it here, it says, discussion of a moratorium for no more than four lots to come through planning commission for six months or until the land use plan is updated.
Right.
So that means until it's updated. I feel like it should be reversed.
The, let me say something. I made the motion, the land use, the motion was that it be a moratorium, a recommendation, go to county commission for a moratorium for six months or until the land use plan is done, whichever comes first.
Exactly.
That is the way the motion is stated.
And that's where I have a problem with it. It should be, because it should be reversed and said, nothing should be done until they come up with this moratorium, or this land plan. Put the burden back on our commissioners and our county government to fix this, and don't penalize us for a year or so of property that I own.
This group...
Or my parents own.
This group does the land use plan.
Right.
We do the land use plan. And we send it to county commission, and they can adopt it. They want to, or they don't have to adopt it, either way. But if we come up with a land use plan and we adopt it, it's something that it's our guideline for us to follow, okay?
Yeah.
As far as that goes. County commission, they can go either way they want to go. And one of the things that the county, that the long-range committee wants to do is more of another growth plan, which takes anywhere from 12 to 18 months.
And that's why I made the motion, for no more than six months or till we get the land use plan. We may finish it up in a couple of more months.
But no disrespect, but what if something happens and it gets struck out for 18 months?
It doesn't, it expires.
Expires.
Absolutely.
Six months.
Six months or whenever the land use plan gets done, whichever comes first.
Okay, I just don't read it that way.
That's just a note on the thing. The motion that was made last time, and it's in our minutes, and I made the motion myself, is six months or till the land use plan is done, whichever comes first. So if we finish this in two months, so we're done with it. But it cannot go more than six months.
It's just hard to swallow that. I look at my mom's farm, and I'm using my mom's farm. She's 83 years old. She passed away. I have three other siblings. That the property value is going to go down if you're limited on how you can sell that.
We understood that.
And it's, you know, I put a lot of sweat on that farm growing up, and I just, it's just hard to swallow. And, but I understand the goal and how we got, what we got to do with this county. But it's still, it bothers me with what this plan is going through.
I understand.
And...
That's one of the things, that very thing we talked about.
Yeah.
That very thing we talked about.
And this, this thing here, absolutely... And this, this thing here absolutely does not do anything as far as what we're doing. We've still gotta discuss a whole lot of stuff about the overlays and all that. That, this motion has nothing to do with that.
No.
What happens in six months though? Does anything that we bring to you, does it, well, wait a minute, we're, we've done a moratorium there for six months, we're not gonna allow anything happen except for four lots.
That's, that's the way the motion is right now, yes, Larry. That's the way the motion is right now, so.
What if I've got two subdivisions right now, I've been waiting on a surveyor, that I have preliminary in two weeks? I can't bring that in front of you all after standing?
Cause County Commission don't- County Commission don't make the layup, so anything that-
But, but you know, that's my point, is a lot of people spent, took, you know, a couple million dollars, three million dollars over the past month or two to do a subdivision over the next month or two. And now, we can't do anything for six months?
No, 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 you'd have to wait like, I agree. County's gotta go, this is just recognition.
Just wondering if this, may I ask a question on four lots? Why in the world, and where did that number come from?
Just the two, and two, then you don't have to talk to them.
No, that's, four lots is on, you don't have to have a preliminary for four. Anything over four has to have a preliminary, that's way out of the building.
Yes. Uh, that, that was, that was, that was the reason. So, you, you, you come with four lots, you don't have to have a preliminary plat, cause it says preliminary plats. Is, is what it does right here.
What's the logic, uh, let me ask that one, because that's an arbitrary number, it has to be a draw.
The logic was, is that four lots or less didn't have to have a preliminary plat. So, you don't have to submit one, but anything over that, cause the moratorium is for preliminary plats. Yeah. If you've already got a preliminary plat through, and you come in with a final.
Yeah, I understand.
See, that, that's, it's, that's already done.
But what if my preliminary won't be turned in for another, two weeks, three weeks?
Give it a mark.
If y'all will call it a year, make sure that gets done, that'd be appreciated.
And it may not pass the commission.
Yeah, it may not.
It may not pass.
If you have so many people that are right up there.
What about the fact that, one of the complaints right now is house prices are so high. I mean, I'm a contractor, my dad was a contractor for thirty years, and I just got back into this. And the complaints are not from everybody, prices are high, and I know lumber's volatile and everything else. But as soon as this six month goes into place, those spare houses that people already struggle to afford are just gonna go up. Because, I mean, it's, if, if, you know, it's, ones who are building the singles at that point kind of hold the, hold the reins. And, uh, that was the thing people were worried about, is skyrocketing prices, and I can tell you that they will go up because of that.
That may be why we've done forty-four building permits in the month of February.
Well, the building permits, building permits don't always necessarily go per se hand in hand with land development. Some developments take longer to build out, but some of them are built out faster, okay, uh, from that standpoint. So, to me, building permits are, are sorta, to me are irrelevant in, in this whole scheme and the whole things. It, it, to me, it's irrelevant, cause I've seen it's up and down, up and down, up and down, up and down, is where it goes.
But Terry, would you agree that most of our subdivisions around here have, because of the last three years being so, uh, so good, most of them are filled up?
That's, that's happened, yes.
So, without growth of our subdivisions, then basically we're without jobs.
Well-
I mean, wouldn't you agree with that?
I, I would agree, yeah, I'm not, I'm not gonna like it anymore.
And far as that goes, most of my clientele is, I'd say three, fours or better, don't have any kids at school. They're retired. They just want to come to this area. But now, we're closing off, you know, they're just, so what do we do?
I don't know, I mean, everybody here that has made a valid point. And we, we, and, and it's not as if we didn't take that into consideration, we had our discussion the first go around, cause we did. Because we understood some of the consequences that, that could come into play when, when this was here. And, uh, so, uh-
Did y'all have a public meeting for that?
Yes, the last, the last, we talked about the last Planning Commission meeting.
So, and there will be a public hearing before the County Commission meeting. And you'll have an opportunity to get up and speak at that time, uh, or tell your commissioner how you feel.
Don't let you put us in that position, to be honest with you.
Well, you know, here's the thing, and, and, and deep down, I think this probably could have happened. Let's say, for instance, we took a vote for this moratorium and it, and it failed here to recommendation. I'm not saying the County Commission could not still have gone ahead and proceeded without that.
I think they could.
They could have. So, you see what I'm saying? Even though we may be doing what we're doing here, and let's say, for instance, we decided we didn't want to do it, they have the power to override us and do it anyway.
Yeah, but wouldn't you agree that construction, and I've been in it for thirty-five years, it's on a way? It's high, it gets real low, look at oh eight.
I know, I know.
I mean, we didn't have beans to sell then, and so now it's on the highway, it's coming down. I just don't understand why we have to go through all this extra work and time trying to stop something when we know it's gonna slow down, just give it a little time. Would you agree with that?
I understand, yes.
I mean, I would, I've been around it a lot of years, that's what it does.
Terry, something else too, that I'd like to say, I've been in manufacturing for forty-three years. I've been all over the world starting up companies and stuff. This will not affect industrial coming into Jefferson County. There's other reasons why industrial's not coming into Jefferson County. And I know that for a fact, and I can base forty-three years of my life on that. And I feel like I'm very qualified. And again, I've been all over the world starting up companies.
I understand, I, I understand where you're coming, yeah, I, I understand that, uh-
But nobody ever asks people that has the experience.
Well, you know, here's the thing. And I say this all the time, we meet every month, right here. And you come anytime you want to this meeting.
And I apologize for not coming.
Anytime you want to come to this meeting, you're welcome to come here and throw your ideas at us and we listen, okay? Uh, but sometimes-
We shouldn't have to. We shouldn't have thought, we gotta look over, everybody's told.
Why not? I mean, if you're a citizen of Jefferson County, you have as much right to come here and speak as anybody does. And if you've got an opinion, we're gonna listen to it. So, that's just it, uh, per se. Now, you know, we are where we are in this county. And, and the next, this next step, to me, is, is gonna make a, a, a big difference. What it's gonna tell me is, is who, what we're gonna be for the next ten years. That's what's gonna tell me.
It takes residential rooftops to get to commercial. I mean, that's proven fact, we've talked to them, nobody wants to come until we reach a certain number of people. So, press and pause on it, I don't feel like it's the right thing to do. Why not work on the land use plan in the background, and when it's prepared, implement it if the County Commission wants it?
I, I, I see where you're coming from, Nick, on that. But you gotta look at, also, at the demographics of our county. And I had a conversation with a gentleman the other day about this, and he's, and his, his main thing was, he told me, he says, Terry, he says, in this county, he says, we, we have a brain drain. He says, our, our smartest and brightest, they leave here. He said, because they, they don't, they don't see a future here, basically, to raise their family or, or, or to make the living that they think they can make, okay? And so, we're filling that void with a lot of people who are retired. And they're, they're putting the rooftops there, but they're not gonna work in industry. They're, they're not, they've already made their living, they're, they're just coming here safe. So, somewhere along the line, we missed the boat. We missed it, when that group that we needed in here, that, that, that were our top in industry says, hey, look what they've got. They got a lot of talent there, I wanna come. Well, but we didn't get that.
Well, if y'all don't mind, when Toyota, the one that we planted here, you want it then?
We've made some decisions, and it's, making a few decisions, don't create a reason to make more. And I just feel like this is a bad decision.
I understand, I, 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 I-
I'd say if people thought one more board, y'all would have it.
So.
There, there is the, the discussion at the very front end of this was about, you know, how we have to kind of plan for commercial, residential, industrial, you know, industry and all that. I grew up here, I've, I lived four years in Oxford, then moved back, um, and my family's here, I have five kids. And, um, the thing that's always been here is that growing up here, there's, there's, and I don't, I grew up here, like I said, there's not that much to do, really do here. If I want to do something, I go to a different county and to do it, more or less. The issue is, is that we want to bring in stuff, and then I realize it gets shot down from all the different people. The issue is not the residential builders, it's the fact that we're talking about doing these plans, but, you know, in business, you have to have your plans and they, you change them, but things should have already been kind of put in place to where I don't have to go to another county. And now, it's because we're trying to catch up, as we're talking about, we're being penalized as constructor, in the construction industry because things couldn't get done. And, and that's just kind of the, the way it's kind of playing out. It's, we're being penalized because people can't put a plan in order, but, and, and this is kind of, not my problem that everybody else can't put their plans together, and I know that the meetings are here, but, like the gentleman here, this is the first one I've been to, but I honestly had no idea what was going on. I honestly thought like a normal things, you talk when the motion's coming up, cause that would make sense, you would not speak, you know, an hour and a half beforehand. It would be, but that's just, we did give room of the process to it. You know, it's, if there's, needs to be a ten-year plan, where was the last ten-year plan, the last five-year plan, and everything else that's got us to this point?
It was in place, okay, it was in place. It was in place. But the problem is, and I still say this all along, that our plan, when we, when we looked at the plan and everything else, the fault that I see is, is this, and I've seen it so long, we have to fight too hard to get what we consider to be properties for commercial and industrial. And we shouldn't have to do that fight, and I see it all the time. And we, you say this is your first meeting? I've had courtrooms full of people in here that just mad as hornets, wanna fight us, and this, that, whatever, over decisions that had to be made that, that just made common sense to us, but it didn't to them. So, somewhere along the line, we have to quit that fight. We just gonna have to come in here and say, this is, this is the way it's gonna, this is the way it needs to be. This is the best thing for Jefferson County, this is the way it needs to be. Now, whether or not we can get that accomplished, I don't know, okay? If not, then, then we're back where we are and go. Terry, there's, there's not any development or businesses, industry that's gonna come to this area. We've, we've wrestled this a lot, a long time. There's not a wastewater plant in the county that can handle industrial pre-treatment program. It's just not here. They can go so many other places, so much cheaper.
Well, that may be the case.
We are a veteran community.
That may be the case, okay? But here's my thing, if we don't give them a place to go, then-
They won't come for sure.
For sure. And that's, that's what we found.
Then those are more-
Then when they do come, we run them off.
Well, I'm just saying, if you don't-
It don't make sense.
If you don't, if, if you don't give them a place to come, they don't want to, I don't know how many of them come in here and just give up because they didn't want to fight. And, and that's not the way it should be. You know, it's, that's just not gonna be, we've had a lot of people in here that had some good ideas to do it, and they just get beat down in here so bad, and they just give up and walk out the door.
Terry, we don't have a labor force here. That's one of the one, number one things that companies are looking for, is a labor force to bring into their company. It's not here.
I, I'm gonna disagree with you on that one, because, because here's the thing, there's enough people drives in Oxford. If they had enough jobs here, yeah, they'd stay here.
Well, they're only an hour. What, what company's gonna come in here and pay somebody enough an hour to buy a three, four hundred thousand dollar house? Ain't gonna happen.
But if they're-
You're gonna get smaller.
You just cross paths residential, you're using us as an excuse.
So, what you're telling me is that there's no need for us to even worry about commercial and industrial?
Let's just throw it wide open and not worry about doing anything from now on, and we'll let the thing-
We already have zoning and subdivision regulations, that's not why.
So, there's no need to have them, there's no need to have any zoning or anything if you're gonna do this. If you're not even gonna try to improve.
Sounds like you not have what we have existing, cause it's not controlling it, that's what it feels like.
What we have is not conducive enough to, to, for people to come in here to want to come to the county because they don't want to put up with the fight. And that's the truth, because-
Who are they fighting with?
Who are they, who are they fighting with?
Yeah.
They're fighting with Jefferson County people.
Yeah, because they don't want them in their neighborhood.
That's it. That's the problem that we have right there. And it gets down to that point right there where people just give up. So, somewhere along the line, we're gonna have to take a stand saying, okay, I understand you don't want it, but in the best interest of Jefferson County, this is where it needs to be. And we're gonna have to stand up and say that, and put it on, on a zoning map, say this is the way that it is, and hammer that down. If we don't, if we don't, in ten years, we'll be going through the same argument.
Well, I want to make mention, over the past probably ten or twelve years, we have tried multiple times to get property rezoned on main arteries going into Jefferson City, Choggy Pike, Dumplin Valley. Couldn't think of a better place to get it rezoned, to get a higher density. And we've not had anybody stand up and say, that's what's best for Jefferson County's tax base. It's always, no, you're not in the urban growth boundary. So, it's A one, just because everybody thinks it should be A one.
And I only want to change A one, maybe I'll work in the older bracket.
Okay, I, I, I understand where you're coming from on, on the zoning issues and everything, as far as that goes. And there, my thing is, is that when we change this, other than the urban growth boundary being an area that's controlled by a subdivision, I think that once we, if we, if we rezone this county, I think that would be irrelevant.
Well, I think every decision should be made based on what is best for the county. And how can you argue that a higher tax base isn't gonna be better for the county?
Well-
And a higher density in one location rather than running utilities for three country miles.
Okay. So, Nick, I understand what you're saying, but then the numbers that have been presented to us stating that a residential household doesn't pay for itself in property taxes that they pay in Jefferson County for the services that they get.
Where are you getting those numbers?
Where's that number?
Where are you getting those numbers?
You go Blunt, you go to Blunt County, you get your studies.
Blunt County is Jefferson County.
Uh, well.
I'm gonna call for a question on the thing. We've discussed this long enough, if they, if they want to do that. Over the long haul, the numbers don't, Mr. Larry.
They don't?
They don't pay for themselves because you've got more roads, more schools, no.
We pay, the developers pay for the roads and sewers and lots, we pay for that.
I'm, I'm-
Y'all never give me a penny.
But you don't go back and repay them, do you?
No, but it don't have to be repaid for many years.
It's, Dumplin Valley, major corridor, gets used, has to be repaid. What I'm saying is, over the long haul, and the figures out of Blunt County bear this out, and they've done multiple studies down there, they don't create any value other than the initial bump that you get from the property tax. Once you add a ten million or twenty million dollar school, once you add new annual services ongoing, county employees, it, it doesn't, it's not like there's a, it creates a lot of value for the county, because there's added expenses.
Do you not get tax base from Walmart and all these places, they shop groceries with?
We got milk.
Take that into consideration, no?
When's the last time we raised property taxes?
We've, in eight budgets, we've went up a nickel.
Okay, then, if we don't get no industry and commercial, I've told most of y'all this, we ain't got no other way but property taxes and oil tax. So, it's gotta go up sometime. Now, we, I, in my opinion, I fell on deaf ears, John Elton like it, cause I said, we should be raising property taxes two or three cents a year. It don't hurt that deal.
I think you and Amen on that.
If you go, if we go ten years down the road and have to raise it twenty cents, you gonna feel it.
Right. A little at a time.
You gonna feel it. And, and that's the only place we got to get the money, if we don't get industry and commercial in here.
Well, that don't amount to that much, this county and everybody living in it, with the exception of few, can absorb that in wood. I don't totally-
That's, that's good.
That's why we can't pay anything off, we don't raise the taxes to do so, we just carry our own debt.
Twelve years, we've paid forty-five million dollars in debt off.
Just about, how many years ago?
Twelve years.
When it started, okay, that, that's just twelve years.
That's just twelve years, and it's just forty-five million dollars in.
All these houses-
We've never paid anything.
No, you, it took forever before it ever started, John, you know that period, but that's, the proof is, those numbers came from the growth in this county. If you take a subdivision on any county-
No, those numbers came from controlling costs in this county.
They get paid too often and paid and haven't been. So, when you throw those subdivisions out there and you take that multiplier, they're adding, uh, enough money to get that tax revenue back to pay those darn houses.
Over the long haul, it does not- Over the, over the long haul, it does not bear out, because of the, the amount of extra expenses, they do not bear out creating value. They may break even.
When would those, when would we get, you know, very few agencies, very few new jobs out of all what you just mentioned? I haven't seen where that kind of burden has changed comparatively, what we've done, regen, or generating revenue.
In the last, in the last twelve years, we've spent fifty-six million dollars adding schools or renovations.
Yep, and you paid forty-five. So you can do it, just let the growth go. That's how we're getting there.
It does not come out of that.
That's an equation out of very, Blunt County, that's not.
A commercial or an industrial, they cost seventy-seven cents for an industrial or commercial, for every dollar you take in. Open ground costs about fifty-six cents for every dollar you take in. The houses, other than your initial bumps, over the first life of it, over the long haul, it does not create value. It does not pay more than what it brings in.
What about our?
He'll get more commercials.
How, what about our school tax that we have to pay this one time? How much have you made on that?
What do you mean, the school tax?
Facility tax.
Facility tax.
Facility.
It's about three hundred thousand a year, so it's not, if you, if you want to go up on that to pay.
We're, we're paying it, and ain't nobody else around paying it, so I don't wanna do that.
So what I'm saying is, that if you're.
Well, yeah, we're going back to construction. Who's, who's bringing in the money? The construction people.
It's the industry, this county.
It is, it is.
It is the industry, and, and is the county prepared to take people's property to build this sad industrial park somewhere?
We're not, we're not.
We're not talking about taking any property.
That's what I'm hearing, that we got to send side property for industrial, commercially use. Is that not what I'm hearing?
What we're going to do.
Commercial growth.
What we're going to do is, is that we're gonna put an overlay in there for commercial and industry, okay? And the corridors that we feel like that's where it needs to go, all right? We're not taking that part, we're not making them do commercial, we're not making them do industrial, as far as that goes. But if, if, if they ever decide to sell, or this, that, whatever, then that's what the county's saying, this is what we want to see there. It's no, it's no different than driving down the middle of Pigeon Forge, and how they zone all their property down through there. And they said, all right, here's what we got, this is what we want, and this is how we're rezoning it.
But it looks like that, because that's what the demand wants. That'd be like, it's a miracle saying, we're, we want Toyota factory out here in the middle of sixty-six. And they gonna build one.
They probably do.
Yeah, the demand is for tourists. You can't create the demand, the, the demand creates itself.
Why, why, why not the land use without the moratorium? That's all that, you're right. I don't mind the land use one on it. You're right, it's going to happen.
No moratorium.
You just don't do the moratorium, you just do the land use. Nothing gonna stop it.
Yeah.
John, real confident question, after.
I know.
It just looks, looks.
That, that would force the county to decide on something. Now there's no incentive.
You ever wanted the moratorium, do the land use, and everybody be happy out here?
Terry, I do appreciate the three minutes, and. You're my friend, I can say that. Getting back to my real concern is, I, I don't, and, no, it ain't, here we go again. But I, I don't, property owners, I don't wanna see their rights taken away from them, what they can and cannot do to the property. That's, that's my concern.
For six minutes, let alone six months.
And, and just, just for the record, you might wanna reamp, and I'm not being a smart aleck. On the decimals, a seventy decimal is flushing a toilet and highway noise. If y'all propose a sixty decimal, you might be embarrassed.
Well.
And that's a conversation, so I probably throw it to the seven.
You know, here's the thing.
And I'm not being a smart aleck.
When we looked at this, you know, you know, here, it's, it's, you're, it's almost as if we're saying, we don't want it, but what, what, what we're trying to do is this, is the very thing that I've been talking about. If we ever fail to sign for this, to go in there, there would be somebody here, if it was the perfect site, there would be somebody come here and they would fight it. That's what I'm trying to get away from.
Well, and if you put those, what y'all agreed to, as far as sound barriers and stuff like that, I think you can help the, the community, you're gonna put that.
For the public.
That's what I'm saying.
I mean, that's what I think.
Okay, and so you understand that.
Yeah.
But when it, but when it comes before us in here, we're gonna have a courtroom of a hundred and fifty people in here that don't see it the way that you see it. And that we're stupid for doing what we did, and that we didn't protect them at all. Now that's the truth, and that's why I'm, we gotta get away from that.
Well, I say, most of these subdivisions aren't close to any power.
I, you know, I. My second, it's just, I, I, these issues come forth all the time. Anyway, I got a motion on the table, right now.
The moratorium is unconstitutional.
So, I got a motion on the table. Uh, baseball, does everybody remember what the motion is? That this is for a moratorium, for no more than four lots to, to be approved, uh, and no preliminary plans approved until either six months or a double land use plan is updated.
Whichever comes first.
Whichever comes first.
I got a second by Chigger, right?
So we have.
Is that right?
All right, so he's called, so we got a proper motion and a second.
With the recommendation to go to the county committee.
Yeah, county.
County commission for approval.
When is that?
I, yeah, I've got that actually, in here too.
Okay.
That's what legal said it had to be.
So I got a proper motion, I got a proper second. Any discussion from you all? Okay, all right. We'll, we'll vote, are you ready? All those in favor say aye.
Uh.
Any opposed?
No.
No, me too. But it's, the motion carries, so it will be presented to the county commission.
Can I say something, Terry?
Okay.
Not as well. Oh, yeah. Come on, lift the tone, you're hurting.
You can shoot me down. So I'm Katie Huffaker, and I'm one of the county commissioners, and I'm on the long-range planning committee, which I'm not the spokesperson for the long-range planning committee at all. But I, Terry referenced it, and so, um, as part of our committee, we're looking at things, and so a company's told us that a couple of our neighboring counties are supposed to have big announcements that will affect us. And they compared it to when Volkswagen went into Chattanooga, and then the state offered large grants for strategic plans for the counties. So what we're looking at, I don't know if the announcement of four oh seven's what they're talking about, if there will be other announcements. But, so from the long-range planning committee, we only have a land use plan, but people who have better plans and documentation in place also have comprehensive and strategic growth plans. So I know you all are developing the county, and so what we constantly hear is, uh, people who front up here and want it to look and feel like a rural community, small-town feel, and then all these people who have moved in would like the same. So hopefully, one day, we'll have better rules in place. But I was gonna share with you, if we're able to get the best overview plan, which hopefully a grant would pay for most of it, but since you all are developing a community, I was gonna tell you what would fall under the strategic growth plan. Evaluate existing land uses, which is in the land use plan. Detailed strategy for transportation and utilities, detailed strategy for public services, comprehensive community vision, engagement of other regional entities, future land use descriptions, framework for future zoning regulations, development policy, frameworks for small area plans, land use map and plan, corridor and transportation studies, capital improvement investment guidelines, small area plans, targeted strategies for growth areas. So the goal is to make our community better in the long run, for everybody to still have the growth, but where it looks and feels like the small area, so you can have, I've been told, businesses have three different models. They're gonna come to your area because they want the business there. So you can either have the cheapest building, I can't remember if it's A or C, you get in between, or you can get a nice one. So if you have your rules in place for the nice one, that's what you get, but if you don't, you get the cheapest one. So the long-range planning commission, in my own personal opinion, we're not trying to stop growth for twelve to eighteen months, but that's how long it'll actually take us to get a good plan in place, if the grant is, or the grants are available, and we're awarded one. So I just wanted to let you all know, um, that information.
All right, with that being done, we can go to our next item, are you ready, David? Uh, discussing suggestions. Do that. It's nearly nine o'clock. You're worn out. We can, we can continue with, but we've already gone through part of it, we can continue next week.
I'll just say, continue next week.
Okay. So, I'm gonna motion, take a form of motion.
I'll make a motion or recommendation.
Okay. So that would be, we would discuss that in our next meeting. I'll say. Anybody, anybody wanna say here, or do you wanna? All those in favor, aye?
All right.
All right, okay.
What about the minutes?
That's why I'm gonna do another business right here. All right. I guess it was the last meeting that we, I think it was.
December.
December meeting. Before us came, we came for Mr. John Snow, and there was two bonds in place that we were supposed to release. And I think what happened was, Tim brought one before us, one, the intention was that all the work had been completed, and we need to get the second one done. So what it was, is that it was going to cause Mr. Snow some, uh, a very expensive penalty, because we didn't get them both done from his bank.
Yeah, it's gone like twenty thousand or something.
Yeah, twenty, twenty-nine thousand dollars. So what we did was, is we wrote a letter to, to, to help him on his bank, stating that we were just remiss in adding that in there. But to do that, we need to sort of amend those minutes to state that our intentions were that both of those bonds were to be, uh.
And everything, Charlie, the water, and all that.
I don't know that you can amend those minutes because we've already approved, but we can make a motion to put in these minutes.
Okay, that'll be fine.
That says that we made a mistake, that we were remiss in, do it that way. That block, that, and, and reference the minutes and the statement in there, and reference that it should have been bond plural, unless the bonds.
One was a letter credit, one was a bond.
Okay, so, whatever, I mean, we can do that.
The main thing was, all the work was done, and it was the intent to get a model.
Yeah, it was the intent, I mean.
Okay, all right, so I'm gonna take that as a motion.
I'm gonna make a motion to that, correct that.
Okay, I got a proper.
And enter it into the minutes of this meeting.
And I got a second. Oh, okay. Any others, everybody understand what happened? All right, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that brings us down to Attorney. Oh wait, do you have anything?
Yeah, most of you know I'm gonna be out five or six weeks with a little heart bypass surgery, so I don't know if, uh. I can't do the two lockers in-house, and, uh, I don't know if Miss Sue wants to come over here, um, every other day. So I don't know if I wanna give Terry, Terry's the closest one to the courthouse. You might give him the right to sign the two lockers, till I get back.
That would just be, till you get back.
Till you, for forever.
Somewhere.
That's all right. I, I got a proper motion. Everybody understand? Any discussion? All those in favor say aye? Any opposed? Maybe I should have.
You'll regret it, I guarantee. I didn't think he had a heart, I looked like a thumping gizzard or something.
I don't want any.
Did they? Took two X-rays.
Question, I, listen, thank you, thank you for coming, okay? I, I mean, it doesn't bother me when, when people come here and speak to this commission. Uh, maybe I'm a little lax as chairman sometimes, and I, you know, but I, I just look at, you know, mainly as, as Jefferson County. And so as long as you behave, I'm a little bit flexible. I, I do have people come here that are extremely rude. They are. And, you know, and then I have to, we have to be hard, uh, so, and that was not my, maybe I should explain, I'm sorry, Jeff. Earlier on, that when, when I was talking about people speaking here, that makes you believe, you know, any item that was, anything on our agenda that you wanted to talk about, you could have spoken at that time, so.
I just honestly thought it was, when it was brought up.
I, I understand, you know, I.
We need ideas.
I mean, you know.